Call the meeting to order, please join the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the September 2nd special meeting. Folks, one thing we gotta have, you came here, we want to hear you, but please let the people that are speaking here, okay? I know there's excitement, I get it, but please respect others, would you please? Thank you. Ask city clerk to record attendance.
Mayor and council members, as we are not all present in the same room, will you please recall by speaking "present" when I call your names? Bacon.
Present.
Brink.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Corbett.
Present.
Niemeyer.
Present.
Tilton Burn.
Present.
Wendell.
Present.
Alright, we have a quorum. Council, first item is to approve the amended agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, council discussion. Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Alright, agenda's amended. First item is the second reading and ordinance, an action ordinance 20-17, ask city manager to introduce this topic.
Thank you, mayor, city council members. The current Brookings is in phase three of the COVID plan. Existing guidelines have been triggered, with the exception of hospitalizations. Last week, city council had held the first reading of the ordinance to extend the existing measures. Tonight, council will hold the second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance would be in effect for the next sixty days upon publication. The ordinance regulates bars, restaurants, salons to fifty percent, and requires employees to wear masks. There are additional regulations upon retail and guidance for residents. This action does not contain the amendments that were noted yesterday. Staff does recommend approval of ordinance 20-17 that extends the current ordinance.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion is second. Okay, well, a public comment, if you've not been to a council meeting, what we ask is, you can go ahead and start coming up. Please state your name, we want to hear from everybody, so because there's quite a few people here, give everybody the opportunity to speak. If you, if somebody's already repeated something, if you're respectful of that, maybe not repeat it, but also, it's not a back and forth session, we want to hear what you have to say, and then we'll have the council have the opportunity to speak also. Introduce yourself if nobody knows you.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Kevin Grunholdt, I'm owner of Grunholdt Properties here in town. I've lived here for about twenty-two years now. I'd like, I'd like to point out a few thoughts for all of you this evening. What you guys decide now, and have decided in the past, has it worked? And will it work? And why? Or any of you directly affected by this, by these restrictions, mentally and financially? You've stated that you have in the past, but really have you? You all have full paychecks, not all of these people do, and they're all hurting, that's why they're all here. Do you guys understand the full weight of your decisions? And how it affects our community as a whole? Are you aware of all of the businesses that are closing shop here? I currently know of three downtown. They direct me directly, that is why I am here. How does the effective, how does this affect our community moving forward? We've lost these businesses. They, they have thoughts of leaving, there are other businesses that directly benefit off of those businesses. If we're intending on restricting our bars and restaurants, how does it affect the other people that are doing deliveries? People that want to go out and get out of their stressful environment with their families? That's a deal. When you put restrictions on certain places, the people will not go. They won't go to these places. They will target because of restrictions, like, oh, there's a bar, hmm, maybe let's not go out, right? Because there's restrictions on it. So you're kind of targeting those places indirectly, you're not directly doing it, but people's intention is like, you know, maybe we just won't. Well, if nobody's really going out at all, it hurts these places more than you, you'd ever know. I've talked to a few of my tenants in regards to the restrictions, and they have stated that it's no big deal, because they have to wear masks on campus anyway. Some have said that they'd just like to skip, or they'll just skip class because they can just zoom, zoom in and not go to, no, not go out in public. Yet what people don't understand is, some college students are just not here for academic reasons. They're just here for the excitement of college, freedom, fun, and friends. Good luck trying to regulate those hormones. And we were all there, we understand it, you know? By regulating the bars more, you're just incentivizing the parties more at houses. Because when you clear out these bars, that just puts those intended people that either way, they're gonna go out, because they want to get out, they're stressed, they need to relieve that stress, so we're gonna find someplace to end up. If it's not a controlled environment like the bars and restaurants, where they, they do a good job. They, they've, they've done their part to help regulate that stuff. You cannot regulate everyone. You can try, we have tried, but it's not gonna be effective like you think it's going to be. With all of the campuses wearing masks, I have heard, I'm sorry, with all of the campuses wearing masks, they have the largest population of positive cases. I believe three hundred plus, don't poll me, because I got it from a student, she said that there's some online posts that the SDSU is putting out there that updates what is going on on campus, so they know, so they're aware. I've heard mention of Vermillion as an issue. I have to, I've talked to specific people in regards to the, the intended restrictions there. All of the businesses got together to form a lawsuit against the city unless the regulations were dropped. Is that what our city wants? Do we want to be, do we want to have a risk of a lawsuit against all these businesses? No. At least I don't, but that is where it seems like we're going. I mean, I'm not here to target you guys, I don't want to be, you know, a, a point directly at you, but I don't want to have that be an issue. When is enough enough? When exactly do we find, hey, let's get back after our normal life? Obviously, we've got to ease into it, but by putting more restrictions on the situation with campus, are we actually getting better? I, I don't know that, you know, that's, that's for all of us to decide as a community, that's why we're all here to talk about it. Do we want our community to live like this under constant regulation? If you as a council decide to implement these restrictions, are you willing to take out money out of your full paycheck to pay for the lost wages of intended locations these restrictions target? If not... If not, then why implement more restrictions on an already stressful community? If your reason is because of scholars, if your reason is because of college students, then let me remind you that Brookings is built off, off of the college, and we all thrive off our own college experiences here, and the relationships that we have with those students. Thank you for your time.
Just to be clear, I want to make sure everybody understands, this is just to continue with the current ordinance, it's not adding anything to the ordinance, just, I know it gets confusing, there's a lot of that going on, so just so everybody had the same thing. Okay, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, I'm, my name's Sarah Wilson, if you don't know me, thank you for allowing me to speak at the public forum. I want to start by saying that I did attempt to reach out to the mayor after last week's city council meeting, with no reply. I also reached out to the governor's office, and received a recommendation to contact my personal attorney about the civil liberties that you guys are discussing at tonight's meeting. My concerns seemed to fall flat until I reached out to the Brookings community. Within minutes of posting my concerns about your new restrictions, several individuals reached out to me, and someone suggested to start a petition, and maybe gain a couple hundred signatures, to show you guys that there was opposition. Last night, at nine PM, I started the petition, within an hour I had a hundred signatures, and overnight, when I woke up, I had over a thousand. As of seven PM tonight, there were one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine signatures, and dozens of comments from individuals as to why they were signing the petition. The online petition urges council to allow ordinance 20-19 to expire, and to not adopt any of the new restrictions in resolution 20-72. I've attached a link to the petition to your ecomments, for your review and to make it part of the record. I'm here speaking as a business owner, mother, and citizen who's recovered from COVID. I'm here to advocate for myself and my community members, and ask that you pay us some, the respect that we gave you by electing you. Respect to us is allowing us to make the decisions that we deem right for ourselves, our businesses, and our personal residences. Last month, I tested positive for COVID-19, and like eighty percent of the cases, I had a very mild reaction. Even though no one would have known I was suffering from COVID, I made the decision to close down the corporate office I manage in town, as well as the small business I'm a co-owner in downtown, and I waited out quarantine. This was not an easy decision. I'm very fortunate that I work for a company that supported the closing of my office, and paying my employees as I had to send them home just in case. My business partner who's here with me today, we made the decision to close our small business downtown, and only one question came up, and it wasn't COVID-related. Did we have enough money in our bank account to pay rent next month? The answer was yes, and so we could afford to close just in case. It's important to note that the employees that work for us do not depend on the weekly income that they get from our business. While I was able to make these decisions, there are many businesses and individuals with different circumstances, and they may make different decisions when they're faced with a positive test, or mild symptoms. You could never have a full understanding of what it takes for a business to cut capacity and revenue to fifty percent. That one restriction alone will have lasting impacts on businesses and customers, and it's naive of you to think that they can continue for months at this level without lasting consequences. Will they be able to pay rent, payroll, or health insurance? Where will they have to cut because of what each of you are doing to them? Businesses will have to make up for the lost revenue in the form of charging customers more, or they could take business out completely, which we've already seen, and that is one less option for the citizens of Brookings when it comes to retailer dining. Option is the key word here. Every citizen, including our part-time citizens, AKA those college students, have the option to go out and risk COVID. If a business decides to take precautions or not, I have the option to visit that business. Recently, a well-known establishment had a staph test positive for COVID, they didn't close, they notified their emailing list, they took precautions, and now individuals have the option to continue to patronize them. Only that business will know if that was the right decision for them in the long term. I respect my fellow citizens, and I trust them to make decisions that are right for them and their family, because there is no way I could make that for them. Just as you, the members of the city council, have no business making those decisions for me or my family. I would also ask that you take into consideration the message that you're giving our part-time residents, or those college students. They are in college, and they're in an age group that is at low risk for complications from COVID. They're old enough to sign... They're old enough to sign leases in the community, old enough to purchase alcohol from your city-owned liquor store, and I would deem that they're old enough to make their own decisions. We always talk about how we ultimately want them to fall in love with Brookings like so many of us have, and stay here and work after graduation. Trying to limit their freedoms to make their own choices is no way to sell them on staying in the city. I hope that the students are paying attention, and I hope that the ones who decide to stay in Brookings are running for some of your seats next year, to have a voice for the younger half of the community. Whether we like it or not, many of the business in town benefit from the traffic that the students and the college events bring. President Dunn will ultimately be liable for the policies he makes on campus, and drive students away, but the city council should not. I listened to Paul on the radio today, and one of the metrics that you were looking at, and basing your decision off of tonight, is the percentage of tests that are positive. Your number was about thirty-four percent, and you had a threshold of five percent. Now, I can speak from experience, that not everyone that wants a test gets approved to have one. One individual who's exposed to me after my positive test called their primary care provider, let them know they had exposure, and they had a symptom. That alone was not enough to get them tested. With the restrictions around testing, one could conclude that your thirty-four percent number is meaningless. So I would like to know... I have several questions, but one would be, what measures have you put in place around testing in Brookings to validate that measure? And my next question is, what scientific study are you basing your restrictions for ten PM alcohol sales on? And knowing that these metrics can be manipulated, let's address your hospitalization metric. This is and was, at the start of COVID, the only metric that would warrant government interference in private business and civil liberties. That metric is not being met. I'm just gonna end it there, I think you've gotten a sense of where I'm at, I would just ask that as you make these decisions, other councils have decided to expire their ordinances and trust their citizens, and I would ask that you do the same.
Counsel, J.L. Thorpe, and I'll be really brief, you've seen me several times over the past six months up here, but I just wanted it to be on the public record that this evening there are approximately two hundred, two hundred and fifty people here at this meeting, who are spread out around the building in solidarity and in opposition of both the move to extend the original resolution as well as the second ordinance, and I think I can say unequivocally that they are here because they have not felt heard over the last several months, I think that we hear... Like I said, I'll be brief, I just want you guys to see that there may not be, what's the word? People have shown up because they care, because they believe, we believe that we've been trying for the last six months, we followed the rules right away, we did our part, we tried and tried, and as every other community around us has lifted restrictions, Brookings has continued to leave them in place, if not further them, and so, as Sarah mentioned, I mean, the only metric that really ever was mentioned at the beginning of this, when it was all about flattening the curve, was hospitalizations, we are still at six. So I do not understand why we are even all here tonight. I mean, to me, it just makes sense that we could follow... Anyway, like I said, I think Sarah made really good points, I just wanted it to be on the record that there were two hundred and fifty people here this evening, and so you may say, we're getting a lot of emails, we're getting a lot of messages, supporting restrictions, but I just want you to remember, there are two hundred and fifty people here tonight, and nearly two thousand that signed a petition to stop essentially what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Brennan Sullivan, wife Laurie, owner of Sully's Irish Pub here in Brookings, we live at 7198th Street. I realize this isn't a back and forth, but I do have a couple of questions. What is a city sanctioned event, if that could be clarified later during the, during the discussion, I would appreciate that. There was some, bit of a ruckus going on about a picture out in front of one of the, the hospitality establishments downtown, where there was a group of people standing out in front. I believe this to be a cause, not an effect, not a cause. You have a business that is completely, I mean, they're fulfilling the ordinance that you guys enacted. You know, they're operating at fifty percent, when they reach capacity, they're not allowing more people in, you know, is it a loitering issue? Possibly? But, you know, when everybody's getting riled up about, oh, there was, you know, I saw the picture, there was twenty-two people out in front of the bar. It's, and they're outside, so I don't, I don't see, I don't see an issue with that. Ten, ten PM closures? Not closures, it's not allowed to sell, consume, dispense, or any alcoholic beverages. I'm curious what the metric is, is why this would protect anyone. When they leave... At ten PM, somebody's gonna go home, they're gonna call, you know, they're gonna go over to somebody else's house, there's still gonna be contact. You know, my friend Kevin said, you're not gonna control hormones. It's, it's a thing. Whereas the bars, we, we're spending thousands of dollars on sanitizing, cleaning, staff, operating at a fifty percent. I, I don't see what would be, how you could even conclude that being at a house party, even if it was ten people or less, would be safer than being downtown. You know? Like I said, there's more alcohol, and ammonia, and things being spread on all the surfaces there, and we have a lot better ventilation, too. I mean, you think about, you know, if somebody's playing beer pong in somebody's basement, I mean, I'm sorry, most of you have probably seen some of these places before, but that is all, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Hi, so I'm obviously the youngest guy here to be speaking, and I'm not a scientist, I'm not a doctor, I'm just a young guy in Brookings, I moved here five years ago, moved back up here, my parents left, and I loved Brookings, I wanted to come back to South Dakota. I came here, and I had to find my way when I was younger, I made a lot of mistakes, as we all do, but I found my little niche here, and ever since I got here, I fell in love with it. The people here are phenomenal, the kids here are phenomenal, the schools are phenomenal, the leadership's pretty dang good, meanwhile, I'm disappointed right now with some, but we have some pretty good people in this town. So I serve on a young, a board here that promotes youth athletics, I also work at a local business. This last year was gonna be my best year yet, I thought twenty-twenty was gonna be the year that really put me on a launching pad on a national scale. Then COVID hit, and it ruined me, but I'm lucky, I have a strong relationship with Jesus, and it gave me hope. So as I moved forward, COVID moved forward, I didn't always agree with stuff, but I put my head to the grindstone, put masks on, socially distanced, did my part. And as things continued to go, I got hopeful, things were opening up again, we were rocking and rolling again, kids were out playing football again, and cross-country, and soccer, and I came here tonight with a thought after some people had encouraged me to speak, I didn't come here to complain about my situation. I am in a really bad situation right now, I don't know what's gonna happen, I'm young, I don't know where I'm gonna get paid my next bills, I mean, I'm obviously okay right now, but it's scary. But I came here because I love our kids here, I love our school, I support our local businesses, I know many of the owners, and I'm not coming here to complain about myself. Our kids need sports, they need school, they need to live. I've known a bunch of the high school kids here, and those kids are so excited to get back in school, and the local businesses, the restaurant establishments, I know a lot of their owners and managers, they're excited to get rocking and rolling again. And I, I'm excited to support them, but also to boost their kids up here. So I'm not, I'm gonna keep it short, just, please remember when you're doing this stuff, you're not only affecting older people, you're affecting my future, I don't know what I'm gonna do, and that'll make me, I leave, I love Brookings. You're affecting many young kids in high school, who I care deeply about, you're also affecting local businesses, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we have that young gentleman, please give me his name for the public record, please? Do we know, can you please state your name, I would appreciate that.
Sorry, Noah Claire, yes ma'am.
Hi, my name is Dr. Natalie Takes, I am epidemiologist, and I am part of the team that reviews the weekly data and makes recommendations to the city of Brookings, based on the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and the World Health Organization. I'm here tonight in strong support of the provisions in ordinance 20-017, aimed to limit the spread of COVID-19 within the Brookings community. I also recommend the adoption of the emergency resolution to enact these provisions.
Doctor, would you go over to one of the mics a little bit?
Sure. Should I start over again?
Thank you, yeah, thank, well...
Alright, I'll start over.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Natalie Takes, I am epidemiologist, and I am part of the team that reviews the weekly data, and makes recommendations to the city of Brookings, based on the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and the World Health Organization. I am here tonight in strong support of the provisions in ordinance 20-017, aimed to limit the spread of COVID-19 within the Brookings community. I also recommend the adoption of the emergency resolution to enact these provisions immediately, or tomorrow. As can be expected, there's a lot of pushback on these provisions, there is always a tenuous balance between public health and personal liberty. In normal times, measures like those proposed in the ordinance would be unthinkable, but drastic times call for drastic measures. Today, Brookings County has a hundred and seventy-eight active COVID cases. Our county currently has one of the highest per capita active infection levels in the country, and in the world for that matter. In the last seven days... In the last seven days, we have had seventy-five new cases, which is well into both the federal and state red zones. The White House Coronavirus Task Force makes specific recommendations based on this designation, which I'll touch on at the end. Brookings County COVID cases are increasing very quickly, our data for the last week fit an exponential curve. The RT, or the reproduction rate for time, for our county as of last Friday, equaled three. At the rate we are going, and I mean rate in a mathematical sense, the exponential increase in cases is going to outpace our ability to respond. Using hospitalizations...
Let her speak.
Please let me speak. Using hospitalizations as the main metric for making decisions is going to be too slow. Using hospitalizations made sense back when we had RTs of just over one, and doubling times in the weeks-to-month range. Please note, these proposed provisions that are in the current ordinances are actually quite a bit less than what is recommended based on the guidelines from the White House Coronavirus Task Force. So if we were to follow the federal guidelines, we'd be closing bars and gyms, limiting restaurants to one hundred and five percent capacity, restricting all social gatherings to less than ten, and mandating masks outside the home. I see the current proposed measures as a middle ground, basically kind of a lastest effort to see if we can slow the transmission of this virus without the sledgehammers of shutting everything down again. I hope that the proposed measures work, and we can slow virus transmission without further even more drastic measures. And I'll just read you some of the recommendations from the White House Community, White House Coronavirus Task Force. So, and the recommendation is in red zones, which we are currently in, to limit the size of social gatherings to ten or fewer people, and encourage individuals that have participated in large social gatherings, birthday parties, and family gatherings, to get tested and isolate themselves from older family members and those with comorbidities. The recommendation is to close bars and gyms, and create outdoor dining opportunities within pedestrian, with pedestrian areas, limit, as I said, social gatherings to ten or fewer, ensure that all business retailers and personal services require masks, and can safely social distance, and increase messaging on the risk of serious disease for individuals in all age groups with pre-existing obesity, hypertension, and diabetes, and recommend to shelter in place. So, I just wanna read you the...
Let her speak.
The case fatality ratios for South Dakota to date. So the case fatality ratio is basically a measure of the percent of people who have been diagnosed with COVID-19 who have died from it, it's calculated by dividing the number of deaths over the number of people diagnosed. For South Dakota, as of yesterday, in the twenty to twenty-nine age group, there was point one percent of people who were diagnosed died, so that's one death in one thousand cases. In the thirty to thirty-nine age group, the case fatality ratio is point three percent, that's one death in South Dakota in three hundred and thirty-three cases. In the forty to forty-nine age group, the case fatality ratio is zero point four percent, that's one death in a hun, in two hundred and fifty cases, and I would point out that I am in the, that forty-year-old age category. For people in their fifties, the case fatality ratio in South Dakota is one... For people in their 50s, the case fatality ratio in South Dakota is 1.2%. That's one death in 83 cases. For six people in their 60s, it's 3%. That's one death in 33 cases. For people in their 70s, it's 6.3%. That's one death in 16 cases. And for people in their 80s, it's 22.5%. That's one death in 4.5 cases. So, people may not be used to thinking about probabilities like that. But I would point out that those are risks that we don't take on a normal daily basis. And that, in addition to the all-cause mortality and excess deaths that we've seen in this country, is the reason for these extreme provisions that we're talking about right now. With that, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's all just take a deep breath. We're all adults here, right? We're all on the same side. City council members, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Luke Thompson, I live in Volga, but I'm employed here in Brookings. I urge you in the strongest possible manner not to pass City Ordinance 20-017. As a husband and father, I am appalled at the city of Brookings, that the city of Brookings would actively seek to surrender the freedoms granted every one of us by the Constitution of the United States. I stand by the right and ability for every person to make their own decisions about what is medically necessary for their own bodies. Mask or no mask? Mask or no mask, social distance or not. To have Brookings mandate a medical procedure is not only unconstitutional, but an insult to the thousands of young men and women who have purchased that very freedom with their lives. Furthermore, passing this ordinance sets an extremely dangerous precedent for mandating further, more invasive, and outright dangerous medical procedures. Like the novel and highly experimental vaccine they're developing that actually modifies your DNA and has no long-term double-blind placebo safety studies. This can happen. I beg you, do not set this precedent. I want to keep my freedom, and you should not be so quick to give it up. Please protect our city from the impulsive and reckless acts of those who are acting out of fear. From those submitting themselves to fear porn streaming from our public media. Doctors, PhDs, and families alike. It doesn't discriminate. From those I believe to be acting out of fear and external pressure. Please take a look at the death counts and not the actual number of cases. Our media has quietly shifted from proclaiming death counts to the case numbers, since the death count rate continues to plummet. Please take a look at deaths and hospitalizations due to COVID-19 excluding comorbidities. Not cases. Look at the death rate. Acceptable seasonal flu deaths range around 12,000 to 61,000 deaths per year in the United States since 2010, according to the CDC. We are more informed about this virus now than when we started, yet this narrative has not changed. Also, college students are not kids. They are adults, like you and me. Your actions are treating them like children. If you believe the people, our state college is charging tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars for their services, our kids, then perhaps you should rethink our administration, our admissions system for the state, instead of trying to regulate an entire city. Please oppose City Ordinance 20-017 tonight, and I urge all of you to remove all regulations regarding COVID-19. God bless each of you.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Zankinell, and I just wanna ask everyone in here, do you think the COVID virus is leaving anytime soon? Do you wanna live in a bubble? Let's live in a bubble. I mean, fact. COVID virus isn't leaving, is not leaving. I wanna, and all you guys up here with masks on, you look silly, because you're six feet apart. We wanna talk about resolution. Resolution, let's give the college kids their money back, give them gas money to go home, and let's get them out of town. If that's the problem, let's send them home. Give them gas money. Give them their tuition back. Let's don't rob the kids. That's the problem with this, guys. I mean, it's clear where it's going. They're gonna get their tuition, and then they're gonna shut it down. They're all gonna be online. Already, they're already online. I mean, kids are in 13 hours, they got one class they go to class for. The rest of the time, they're in their dorm, on an, on an internet, doing school. Let's send them home, give them their money back. If that's the problem with the city of Brookings, let's take care of it. That's the resolution. Let the kids go home, give them their money back, let's don't cost them money to be here. And let's keep the business. If you guys wanna take half your salary, take half your salary. These bars will take half their salary, too. And let's get through here. It's a real problem. If you guys want half your salary, then let's do it. Half your salary, they'll take half staff, half people come in their bars. That's my piece. If you want a resolution, give the kids their money back and send them home. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kristen Brandt.
Okay, hold it. Let's respect the speaker, shall we? Try again.
Okay. My name's Kristen Brandt. I became a community member about five years ago. I have four children, one of which is immunocompromised, so he falls in the high-risk category. I have a mother with multiple comorbidities. She falls in the high-risk category. I have been an essential employee. My children and I have not worn a mask. I'm a firm believer in science and the human body. We're losing sight of all of this. Like, the statistics are under 1%. Shutting down the community is not gonna make things work. Have we looked at, like, Minnesota, these other states that have the highest rates and are just jumping? And they have had mandated masks, their cities have been closed down. Why are their numbers jumping high? If, if everything's being implemented? Nobody's looking at the big picture, masks. We are going off a research study of 67 participants in a hair salon in 2020, because two were positive. Well, those, that was a study that was conducted in two to four days. Two to four days, they're not even testing for COVID now until seven days out. So how effective is that study? We are going by nothing. It's a virus. A virus will be around forever. It's not going anywhere. We need to go back to washing our hands, teaching our kids the proper stuff that needs to be done, like we always have. So when we get a letter from the school that says we need to screen our children before we send them to school, do you not think as a mother, we already know when our kids are sick? Or we already see if they have a fever? If they, we see that they have stuff like that? We check stuff like that, we're grown adults. When this started, the golf course was open, the parks were closed, liquor stores, that was open, it closed for a while. The golf course and the parks really blows my mind. I just can't get over that. You talk about essential, I've been essential. I've been in the working field, I've been exposed to COVID, many cases of COVID. I've probably had COVID. I have no clue. But, it's, it's just, none of this makes sense to me, because ultimately, we're not doing any good. We're dividing the community, you're taking away support from the small businesses that need to run. We're supporting Walmart, big corporate businesses. And that's not... I just think that we need to find common ground as a community. I'm so tired of seeing the socialism, the division, people degrading because of masks versus no masks. I wash my hands, I'm a good person. I have four children. My son, back to his immunocompromised, I was told he wasn't gonna make it to see his first birthday. Well, he made it to see his first birthday. I was told at that time to plan his funeral. I didn't listen. I did whatever I could as a mother to keep him alive. Well, then school came, and they said to me, he has like seven to 10 different specialists that he sees for all different areas of his body. One of his diagnoses, respiratory failure. He gets frequent pneumonia, he has lung failure, he has scar tissue on his lungs. He has not worn a mask, he has been out in the public. He has three brothers that have been out in the public, and he is fine. Now, if he were, if somebody said to me, if he were to get COVID and die from COVID, how would you feel? I said, I would feel still, I would still feel the same, because there are so many viruses out there that affect everybody and any of us at all times. Influenza is a big one. And we've never implemented anything for that, ever. It's, it's just, we're beating around the bush, we're not getting any resolution. You're gonna follow the same city ordinance that's gonna continue to take revenue and damage the city. It's not gonna get us anywhere. We need to build our community up, we need to become united, we need to work together, know that it's a virus, follow standard precautions that have always been implemented. That's exactly what it boils down to. I, do you guys, when I'm out in public, I'm not gonna cough in your face. That's droplet precautions. So me wearing a mask and not exposing you to anything, it just, mask, no mask, it don't make any sense. Like, the symptoms, if you were coughing, do you go out in public if you're sick? Would you cough in front of your coworker, your colleague that's sitting across from you? Would you cough right in their face? No. We're all adults. It, it just blows my mind about this virus. I just think that you guys really need to reconsider, think about the community, think about the people that you're supposed to represent in this community. And just really... Stand up and fight for us. Our governor's been doing it. She's had many battles. When you guys sit here at heads, majority of the people vote you in, because we assume, like, majority people vote governor in. So you guys kind of are on the same page. Well, you guys are completely not on the same page as our government. There is a 10th Amendment. Per the 10th Amendment, public health, if they were to order an emergency medical response, it is up per state to decide at that time if they wanna mandate anything. Our state has chose not to mandate anything. Why is Brookings, South Dakota, choosing to shut the town down and mandate everything? Do we not represent South Dakota as a whole? Shouldn't we all work together and be one? Yes, I understand that there's lots of emotions and fear that are involved in this. I understand that. Our lives are about risks. We take a risk hopping in our vehicle every day. I have a higher chance of getting struck by lightning than I do of dying from COVID. Do you agree? And I respect the epidemiologist, the doctor, for sharing her statistics. They're very important when doing research. But we need to look at the numbers. If we continue to keep everything shut down, we are not gonna go anywhere. The numbers are just gonna continue to increase with hospitalizations. Right now are like a 3%, I think, statewide. Is that a good reason to shut down our, our city? If you look at the people that have been infected... So today I heard on the radio, I don't watch the media, I don't listen to the news. I'm big into research, I'm big into facts, I'm big into all of that. I am like a broken record, I've been in school forever. I am currently going for my doctor, my DNP. I have walked up the ladder, I've done lots of research, and it all boils back down to science. The fear that was installed in many people, I get it. It's fear, you have that right. You don't wanna die, it's inevitable, though. We're all gonna die someday, whether it's from COVID, whether it's from influenza, whether it's from pneumonia, whether it's from a vehicle accident, whether it's from walking down your steps, you slip and hit your head. We're gonna die of something. Doing this is taking that away from us and not letting us live. Increasing the anxiety, depression, suicide, drinking, drugs. I mean, it's all increasing. Highly. And in kids, the thing that hurts me the most with this whole thing is our kids are being so affected and punished, and they should not be. We're setting the precedent for our children. We wanna set a good example for them. You tell them to brush their teeth, you tell them to wash their hands. After you go to the bathroom, wash your hands. Don't cough in people's face. Don't sneeze in people's face, you put it in your elbow, wash your hands. It, it's the way it's supposed to be. And our bodies with our kids have a natural response. We're supposed to be exposed to pathogens. We're supposed to build up immunity and antibodies to protect against that. There's currently a lot of research going on on the antibodies in our bodies when they're exposed to COVID. And there wasn't a peer-reviewed study, but there's many scientists that have said it has proven that our memory cells are catching the virus, which is good. And then the T-cells are responding and fighting it off. So that saying right there is that science and our bodies are doing what they're supposed to be doing. The longevity, they don't know, but they say that there's a high indication that the longevity is good. This is just such a new virus. But we need to look at everything, we need to take everything into consideration. We just need to come together as one, we need to quit dividing everybody. We need to let, support our community, build it strong again, not let it fail. We don't wanna watch it fail, because many people are choosing different school districts. I wanted to file an injunction against the school, file a lawsuit, because I felt like forcing my child to wear a mask was wrong. When I walk into public facilities and I'm not wearing a mask, I get scolded, I get stared at like I'm a horrible person, I've even heard people call names. It's gonna continue to get like that, unless we change that. We need to change that. I thank you guys for your time. I have many other things that I would like to talk about, but there's many other people that need to talk. I just think that it's important that we know that we're naturally supposed to be exposed to infections, pathogens, as everybody else is, and it's the way our bodies grow.
Hi, I'm Patty Dexter.
Could you step up closer to the mic, please?
Hi, I'm Patty Dexter. I have been in nursing homes for 23 years and daycare for 15 years. I've seen something that most of you guys don't even see. People, like you, wearing masks. Two-year-olds, not. Why? Why? That child could spread it just as much as you, and you, and you, and us. And you're killing that child, just like you would anybody else. And you don't even see it. You guys wanna do something, stop the epidemic of abortions. You check the abortions, and you have this. Think about it. You guys are in masks, that's your option. Let us have an option, let us have a choice. If that's your choice, so be it. Let us have ours. But what about that baby? That two-year-old, or under, or four, not wearing masks? You're, you're getting that little child in more danger and not even thinking. I'd go on both sides. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Good eve, good evening. I'm Carla Dieter. Carla Dieter, and I've been in RN for 45 years. I'm also a retired nurse practitioner. So I feel like I have some knowledge about viruses, and I've been doing a lot of reading, and I only have two points here to make. There've been a lot of great points here tonight. Number one, I, I respect the epidemiologist, and I thank her for her statistics and the work that she's done. I'm sure that her decision and trying to make some recommendations to this council were very difficult. were very difficult. However, I've got a couple of questions to ask her. Out of the deaths that we've had here in Brookings County, I'd like to know how many of those deaths had pre-existing conditions? Did they die of COVID? Did they die of COVID or did they die with COVID and pre-existing conditions? We all know that, that people, if they've been, even when they die or when they come into the hospital for any other reason and they're tested for COVID, they're counted as a COVID case. That doesn't mean that they are ill with COVID. We have somebody here that's already said she's, she had COVID, it was a very mild case. We have somebody else that said she's, she's got a son who is at high risk. We know who the high-risk people are. But we also know, and this is, this is stats, healthy people are not that, at risk. And especially if you're 65 and under, and I've heard even 70 and under. If you are, if you are a healthy person, your risk is not high. So let's, let's get real with this. And number two, you, I think at a time when, and I'm not saying that necessarily in, in Brookings, there's any disrespect for, for police because I have a high regard for the You are putting the police at risk. Who is, who are you going to have enforcing this stuff? So are you gonna send the police? Are people gonna be calling up on their neighbors and saying, there's more than 10 people over here, we got a house party over here? Let's not do that. We've got, they've got enough of that going on anyway. So those are the two things. Who's dying, what, what we have in this county, who's, who has died with COVID, who's died really of COVID? And let's, let's think about enforcement. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of the city council, good evening. I am Noel Cusick and I am a nursing student at SDSU. My mother, a nurse practitioner, works with our current reality every day. And my stepdad works in local government and drafts ordinances on a daily basis in my hometown of Yankton. I truly believe that COVID-19 is a real and serious issue. I would love to see a slow spread, excuse me, I would love to see a slow in the spread of COVID across SDSU and the community of Brookings. That being said, I do not believe an ordinance is the route that we should be taking right now. I believe an ordinance should be a last resort once we have exhausted all other options and it would be very difficult to enforce. Understand there is already an ordinance in place and I'm speaking to the additions that have been proposed. There was bound to be a spike in cases when students returned to campus. The university planned for this to happen and I'm sure many of you did too. We are merely 15 days into the semester and the numbers that are being reflected right now are due to not just heightened student interaction off-campus, i.e. in the bars, but also that students have returned, returned to campus from literally all across the country and the world. We should be promoting more scientifically proven methods to slow this spread. I know that some of you in this room tonight disagree, but we need to continue to encourage social distancing, mask-wearing, and frequent hand washing. Asking students to not go to bars, parties, and other gatherings is just not going to work. Students will find a way to gather with the ordinance or not. This ordinance will just encourage students to gather in even smaller spaces with a higher likelihood of transmission. With the ordinance, you would be taking away the college student's ability to choose the right thing. College is about freedom and getting to know who you are and how you want to impact this world. The only difference is that with the ordinance, you are hurting the businesses in the town that are following the rules and regulations put out by the CDC and are currently thriving from students returning to town. Finally, I would like to say that I'm highly involved with many organizations on campus and have a lot to lose from being sent home from this amazing town and university. I do not speak on behalf of all the students at SDSU, but I do know that many agree with what I have shared with you tonight. I urge the city of Brookings to continue to be an outstanding host to the best university in South Dakota and not pass this ordinance.
Hi, my name is Lily Essling. I live in the Brookings area. I've been here about five years. I have a daughter who is considered high-risk. She had open-heart surgery in December, she's doing very well. I actually refrained from putting her in Brookings School District because I do not believe in the mask mandate, so she is actually going to school in Dubrook now, where they do not have mask mandates. I just found out about this about three hours ago, so excuse my rough draft. We, the people, say this is enough. You've put us all in danger. You're putting business owners in danger as well as the liability should an employee or a customer be injured or discriminated against because of masks. You are putting women, children, and elderly in danger, leaving them susceptible to mask attacks and abductions, as well as mental and physical toll that has already taken on so many. The CDC has even stated suicides are now occurring at much higher rate. There are people than people that are dying from COVID. Everything the mask is supposed to help, it makes worse. We do not mask healthy people. We do not restrict healthy people. The only people that restrictions like these help are criminals, leading me to believe that your goal must be to create more criminal activity and chaos. The support of your country club buddies for a mask mandate is about as compelling as Bill Gates pushing a vaccine as safe and effective that must be administered to every These people likely don't even work in conditions that require masks, certainly not the conditions of many of their employees, many of which don't agree with this mandate but comply for the sake of their jobs. You all keep seeing, saying the majority agrees, yet the only people I see who are pushing for this are the big influencers in the communities, big companies, groups with the same political philosophies and the few people handpicked by them. But the people, the everyday people, were not backing this. Many are going along right now because they hope the government has good intentions, listen to their needs, and will end it when the numbers get to where they claim they need to be. Yet we see other states now extending their mandates into January. As more and more begin to recognize the side effects brought on by the masks, the more people will refuse. Our children deserve all of their oxygen. Our people deserve all of their oxygen. You must realize that deprivation of oxygen leads to mental impairment and ultimately organ failure. Simply, it's not justified. People, it is time to rise up. It is time to end this. Nearly every person I talk to knows this is ridiculous. Everyone I talk to is waiting for this to be over and they're not talking about a virus. The council is making it quite clear that it never will be unless people, all people, say enough is enough. Take off the mask, this is not a new normal. If we accept a new normal, we will never return to freedom. Slowly, more rights will fade. As soon as their untested, fast-tracked vaccine is made available, you'll see us all back here fighting the mandate that goes along with that, too. People are concerned about losing work. If we continue down this path, no one will have work to be concerned about. At that, at this point in time, we either take back our rights or we'll be without standing in line for rations. Sounds pretty extreme, huh? But really, where else do you see this going? This mandate has no effect on those that are not wearing a mask or those that are. So while your numbers continue to change in a manner that will give you all confidence to shout masks are working, nothing has changed to prove that's the case. Those who understand it's not your place to force masks or any other procedure on an individual are getting fed up. The only authority under which this council has grounds to implement any mandate is during a threat of an epidemic. We do not have sufficient proof of such threat. Even if there was, you still do not hold unlimited powers to infringe upon inalienable rights such as to breathe fresh air, speak freely, and participate in public or in our homes. We are not under the threat of an epidemic. We are under a government trying to replicate the threat of an epidemic through mass testing that has already been deemed irrelevant by the CDC. There's no proof of a threat of an epidemic aside from the irrelevant data to justify the use of legal grounds to implement, implement a mask mandate. At this point in time, if this council were to vote an emergency mask mandate, you would be overstepping your limit of legal standing. This mandate is not feasibly enforceable. There are no guidelines for proper wear, no effective material, and certainly no one to enforce such things. This mandate still is not a law. And by any individual that does not agree for medical reasons, religious beliefs, or it goes against their creed is exempt from requirements. These people are protected under the Brookings City Ordinance 15-005. No matter how others feel about this, we do not mandate healthy people or the general public over the fears of others. If there are people that are scared of the public, they must find alternative routes, not strip the rights of thy neighbor. It is the government's rights to protect our, or government's job to protect our rights, not govern our health or everyday lives. I know you underestimate us, I know you think we're the weak minority, you couldn't be more wrong. We are mothers, fathers, and true Americans. We are informed and we know our rights. We will take this to the top, we will bring this before the Supreme Court. And you, each one of you, will be subject to civil suit for squandering our rights as protected in the U.S. Constitution, South Dakota Constitution, and the Brookings City Our numbers grow every day. Every day, the citizens of this city are growing more and more tired and less submissive to the agenda that this council is pushing. If this threat were as emergent as you claim, people, including all of us, wouldn't need convincing. Why do you feel the need to convince perfectly healthy people that they're asymptomatic carriers if the pandemic is real? Real pandemics don't need fake infection numbers, fraudulent tests, fake death certificates, or 24-hours news propaganda. People are not healing over in their homes like we saw videos from China. People who choose not to wear a mask are not becoming sick and dying. Our rights don't end where your fears begin.
Before you speak, if I could just make a comment on this, and I appreciate everybody that's coming up to speak, that's why we have this opportunity. But also, these are being recorded and it's also being transmitted. And I watched the young lady here and everybody was applauding, which is great, but we missed about half of what she was saying. And I think it's important that we hear the people. Well, I'm just saying, you know, let, let the people speak and then, okay?
Please hold applause to the end.
Okay, there you go.
Hi, my name is Grant Tiddy, and as a student and as a member of this community, I believe that this amendment is not only unfair, it is unconstitutional. The intentions of these measures are pure, but the effects are irreversible. Government intervention on private property is a violation of our rights and is not something to be compromised. Freedom of choice is one of the freedoms that we hold dear as citizens of the United States of America. As Governor Kristi Noem said, "We trust our South Dakotans to make the right decisions." This is not showing that you can trust us to make the right decisions. This overreach of government would be unacceptable, and I believe that this use of power is unlawful. And I am here as a member of the student body to say we can be responsible, let us keep our right to choose. I believe that we should not extend the current restrictions and refrain from implementing the new ones. Let the people make the right decisions.
Mayor Corbett, council members, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I don't envy your positions at all, and I know you take them very seriously. My name is Jared Gass, I'm an attorney here in town. I've had my own law practice in town for about 10 years now. I don't come as a representative capacity at all, I'm not representing anyone here. I'm here as a private business owner in town and as a concerned citizen. I'm not gonna repeat a lot of what was already said because I share the same sentiments that many of them do. I would just comment a couple things that were running through my mind as people were speaking, primarily with the, with the epidemiologist. She gave you a lot of figures, a lot of numbers, a lot of, frankly, a lot of doom and gloom in her speech, okay? My suggestion is, don't put that weight on your shoulders, okay? We don't need you to protect us. My, my family does not need you to protect them. That's my responsibility, that's my job, okay? I don't need you to protect the clients and the customers that come into my office on a daily basis. I can, I can do that myself. I have many that come in wearing masks. That's completely fine, I don't care. I have many that come in that, that don't wear masks. All of them are, that's fine, too. I don't wear a mask, okay? But I don't provide different service to those that do. And frankly, the city council, according to the resolution, now is gonna mandate me to wear a mask in my private business if I have clients coming in the door. And that's, that's where I draw the line, okay? And that's where a lot of people in here draw the line as well. So that's my general point. Don't put this on your shoulders, don't put the public safety on your shoulders, okay? You've got a responsibility, sure, as city council members, to promote the healthcare of the community. You can do that by making recommendations, okay? Recommend people wear masks, recommend that people social distance. Please, recommend those things, but don't mandate them. As a, as a city council, clearly you have power, okay? There's no question about that. And for so long, okay, up until we get to 2020, the people of Brookings frankly couldn't care less. I mean, city council, okay, yep, it's the city council, do their thing, you probably saw some regular people coming in regularly, talking about city issues, things like that. You've never had anything like this, okay, in the recent memory, okay? And there's a reason for that. Because when you exercise your power unreasonably and you enact ordinances that mandate masks in private, in private businesses, you mandate social gathering restrictions in private homes, you cross the line and you exercise your power unreasonably. And that's why you have many, many people here tonight that are quite upset. I would just end with this, and I wanna be sure, and Mayor Corbett, this stems from a remark, a remark that you made after, I think it was Mr. Grunwald that spoke. The, the resolution up for tonight becomes effective immediately if you pass. Okay, this isn't just to push it back and continue the same ordinance. The resolution, according to the terms of the resolution, becomes effective upon passage of this resolution and until the September 3rd reading. So I wanna be sure that everybody on the city council knows, and everybody in here knows, what's at stake tonight, okay? The resolution, if adopted, becomes effective immediately tonight, and you need to deny the resolution, and you need to deny any further ordinance, and you need to shut this thing down and let the people take care of themselves and their families and the community as a whole.
Mayor Corbett, council, my name is Reed Mulkey, and I'm here representing several of the small businesses downtown that would potentially be affected by, by your decision tonight. And not only the extension, but also the amendments that are proposed. Businesses that I represent are at a breaking point. You've asked everyone in the community to, that we're all in this together, that we gotta suck it up and try and get through it. And for the most part, the businesses I represent decided to shut down before there was any action on the part of the city. They, they want what's best for their community. And I think that in general, most businesses do, it's to their benefit. And as a result of actions and some that's in your control and some that's out, they've been closed for two, two months this year. For the last several months, they've been operating at 50% capacity. They're spending more and more costs on cleaning, operating costs, disinfectants. All the while, they're barely breaking even or losing money in the hopes that there's some light at the end of the tunnel here, and there doesn't seem to be any. On top of it, the individuals I represent, once they go business, it's affecting them the worst. They, and I can't find, and I gotta ask the question today, they're, they're trying to figure out what evidence there is that's out there that they're doing there is that's out there that they're doing something wrong, that there is some hotspot that's happened because of their behaviors and their activities while they're operating their businesses according to the ordinance that's currently in place and set to expire. And I don't know what the answer to that is. But by following this amended resolution or by enacting the amended ordinance, you're taking away their last remaining lifeline. So you say, "Well, we're going to let you stay open." But the problem is, is that the times that you're recommending that they have to be closed or demanding that they have to be closed is the only time that they may make between 75% and 90% of their income. That's when they make it. They make it on Thursday nights, Friday nights, and Saturday nights, and that's why they're open during the day. That's why they're open on Mondays or Tuesdays. And it's taking that after six months of, "Oh, man, we just have to survive this and get through it. Hopefully, the bank is going to understand when I call," to saying, "Nope, we really appreciate the efforts you've made, but we don't have any evidence." But because people gather, they're, "Wham, we're going to slam the door. We're going to slam it for 60 days, 90 days, nobody knows." These are the businesses that support the youth sports leagues. They support the community. They support SDSU, and they always have, and they always will, but not when they're gone, not when they call up a bankruptcy attorney because they can't get through this thing. And I don't think that you should select 10 businesses in town and say, "Well, sorry, we appreciate your help on this thing, and we know you'll get through it, but bye." It seems like to me, and again, Brookings has had probably one of the most strict ordinances in the whole state for the period of this thing. And, which again, we've all been in it together to try and make this thing work because we don't know where it's headed, but all of a sudden, as the rest of the state opens up, the governor talks about individual responsibilities and giving that rights back to people. We've got pretty much every city in the state, they're open, full boat open, not 50% open, they're open, and they're finding a way to get through it and putting that on their citizens. But yet, because we invited 12,000 people back to our community and we have 150 new cases, now we have to go the other way. And it just doesn't make sense. Those cases had to go up, but again, where's the evidence? What about Walmart? What about Hy-Vee? We aren't asking them to shut down. I mean, the way that the ordinance is drafted and the way it's singling out my clients is that, "Well, the virus is most likely to spread in the evenings, Thursday through Saturday," and I know that that's not the case. And I think the key problem, and I know it's been touched on, and I'll finish up here, but the key problem is that an emergency, a health emergency, yes, it causes fear. It's caused fear in everybody for over six months, but it doesn't override the Constitution, and the Constitution has to stand for something. And taking away these people's ability to earn a living, it's just flat wrong, and it's in violation of the Constitution, and I don't know how else to explain it. They're being singled out as a group that they're bad. And I don't understand how you can look some of these people in the eye as you walk down the street, knowing how much they've committed and given to this community, and then just say, "Well, but your guys' businesses don't matter, your employees don't matter, and we don't care if your doors are open in 30 days or 60 days or not." It's not fair. I don't understand why we are operating out of fear, why we aren't concerned in trying to push every piece of help we can give to small businesses. Instead of that, we're yanking it away. I get it. It's a balancing act, but we've got to take some belief in the fact that their blood, sweat, and tears mean something, too, and you're taking that away from them. Bottom line is that shutting down these businesses after months of really strict restrictions according to the state of South Dakota, the only option is, they've contacted me, and we're going to have to pursue something, and I don't think that's what anybody wants. We just want to get back to normal. And that's what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to let the ordinance expire. We're asking you not to adopt any amendments to it.
Thank you.
Can't decide which one to go to since I have heels on.
Okay. I'm actually wearing blue. Thank you for all of you guys who came, and we're red. I'm wearing blue because I'm actually through the COVID and the whole COVID situation. I'm going above and beyond that at this point, back to our constitutional rights. So you will find out why I'm wearing blue.
We, the people of the United States--
Liz, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, yes. My name is Elizabeth Waika. My husband and I own Waika Investments Rental Properties, and I am an employee of the Brookings School District. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America. When any form of governance deprives me and my fellow citizens the right to use my vote to protect and preserve these noble endeavors, I will use my voice to demand change. Too many soldiers, military families, and women, hooray for the 19th Amendment, have sacrificed to secure my right to vote for me to remain silent any longer. I am of the opinion at this point that the city council slash city manager slash mayoral structure of governance does not and never will represent my beliefs and values because I have discovered, unfortunately, through this pandemic, that I am being deprived and denied my right to vote. Brookings, you are being deprived of your right to vote. It is time for each and every one of our individual votes to determine policies, regulations, ordinances, laws, and procedures. This is my city. This is your city, Brookings. City councils, mayors, and city managers do not own their cities. No matter what form of governance is established anywhere at any time, you will never, never, never legislate personal choice. You will never, never, never regulate or restrict a virus out of existence. And today, I call for an end to Brookings City government overreach. I call for a new form of city government where our votes, each and every one of our votes, determines the law of the land.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Barry Dunn. I'm president of South Dakota State University. On behalf of the students, faculty, and staff, I want to thank you for your leadership and the willingness to make courageous decisions. When it comes to public health, the city of Brookings and the university are one. The vast majority of our 2,000 employees call Brookings home, and for much of the year, so do our 12,000 students. COVID-19 has been very challenging in Brookings. It's been challenging all over the United States, and we've seen what works and what doesn't work. And right now, the five North Central Region states are the hottest COVID spots in the United States. So we've made dramatic changes at SDSU, as some people have referred to. We've done that in concert with you. We were able to come back to campus, which was our goal all along, to support these businesses in Brookings. We were able to do that because of your leadership and because of our ability to follow CDC guidelines and the guidelines of the Department of Health. So thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership in bringing SDSU back to life. But I remain very concerned. The virus is increasing exponentially, as we heard. So while I believe that 20-017 actually allowed us to come back, on behalf of SDSU, we support extending it, and we would like you to consider the amendments that you're considering tonight. We believe it is in the best interest, the long-term interest, of our ability to keep those 11,000 students on campus or 12,000 students, and to keep those employees employed on our campus. So thank you for your-- again, I applaud your courage. I applaud your willingness to dig deep into these really complex issues, and I would ask that you vote to extend the ordinance and to positively consider the amendments that you're going to. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, President Dunn.
Isaiah Cravie, I'm the owner of Champion Health Chiropractic. I'm a small business owner. I'm here as a business owner tonight, and as you've heard, there's a lot of reasons why people are feeling the way that they're feeling, obviously on both sides. But without creating too much more repeating of what they've already stated, I just want to say that as my business, and I may lose business because of this, but I think freedom is more important than money, and freedom is more important than business. My family and I will not be participating with the current agenda if it is passed tonight. We will not be wearing a mask. And it breaks my heart to have to see this here in Brookings. My heart is broken. You have caused division here in this town. You have created people to say that you are essential or not essential, and that has caused a division in between me being an essential employee because I'm a doctor and other people because they cut hair, or other people because they serve food. How dare you? You should be ashamed of yourselves. So my purpose is not to come here and rile up the crowd, okay? They are here in support of freedom, and of course, that freedom comes in many different versions. We see people with masks, we see people without masks. Until my board and until a patient specifically requests me to wear a mask, I will not be participating, and that does not come from your direction, all right? And I appreciate the amount of stress that this has caused, not only you, but the entire community, and I apologize if there's been any hate coming back and forth. My family has received hate for not wearing a mask in Walmart, and we try not to do the same for people who are not wearing masks, because I'm not going to tell my four-year-old daughter, my two-year-old son, and my six-month-old daughter that they're going to have to wear a mask everywhere they go. We're just not going to participate. So thank you very much for your time, and I would just strongly urge, don't put myself in a position to be fined around $200 a day, and we'll see how long my business lasts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. All of us here, thank you. Now, I'm wearing blue here today--
Excuse me, would you give your name, please?
Yes. I am TJ Jacoby here. I'm wearing blue here today, not to take a side, but more as just an SDSU student and somebody who likes the color blue. I am here on behalf of fraternity and sorority life here at the Sorority Life Community at South Dakota State University. The fraternity and sorority community has been working diligently to abide by all SDSU pandemic protocols and ensure that campus remain open for instruction throughout November. We believe social gatherings restricted portion of the proposed resolution as written will present unintended barriers to our ability to associate as members of our organizations. Since classes resumed, our organization's house along 20th Avenue, also known as Greek Village, has been conducting our weekly business meetings outdoors to ensure compliance with all applicable SDSU pandemic protocols. In regular attendance at these business meetings are more than 10 members, not residents in the chapter house. Would these and similar business meetings held at Greek Village houses be prohibited under this ordinance? The chapter houses in Greek Village provide a gathering place in a home away from home for the members of our organizations. All five of the chapters housed in Greek Village maintain substance-free housing in accordance with their policies of their respective national organizations. They are the frequent site of activities such as sports games and study groups. Would these and similar activities held at Greek Village houses be prohibited under this ordinance? The fraternity and sorority community understands the public health intent of this proposed ordinance and is supportive of those goals. Fraternities and sororities are registered student organizations and subject to all SDSU pandemic protocols wherever we may gather. We ask that you allow Greek Village to continue to be governed by SDSU and the pandemic protocols. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kyra Worm. My husband, Matt, and I live and work here in Brookings with our six kids. I just wanted to discuss what I heard with the interview with the city manager on the Brookings Radio News this morning. I think that we need to talk about the metric that we're using to make our decisions going forward, and I heard Paul say that we've met three out of the four triggers that the council is using to make their decisions as we move forward. But the only reliable trigger that we're using, based on scientific evidence that's coming out recently, is that fourth trigger that we have not met, the one that has to do with hospitalizations. We're not anywhere close to meeting our threshold for that trigger, and that's the one that is the reliable method. So I want to ask, why are we continuing to ignore hospitalizations? That's the only metric that has mattered from day one. If we haven't met that metric, how are we moving forward with these amendments? So I also want to touch on a couple of quotes from Paul's interview this morning because it scared me, very honestly. If those amendments, this is Paul's quote from this morning, "If the amendments don't help curb the increased COVID, what we'll have to do is recommend a council going to Phase 2." And he stated, "What I can give notice about is, in the next seven to 10 days, if things don't slow down," meaning the COVID numbers don't slow down, case counts don't slow down, "we'll have to have another meeting to look at further restrictions." So what I want to ask is, where are we going from here? The case count is not going to magically respond to our amendments. That's not how viruses work. Are we going to be back in these chambers in seven to 10 days looking at shutting things down completely? Because we're using an impossible metric to drive our decisions, and we're ignoring that fourth trigger. We're ignoring the hospitalizations, the one that matters. I know that nobody on this council wants to move to Phase 2, and nobody in this room wants to move to Phase 2. Then don't. Please consider tabling these resolutions. You don't have to act tonight. You don't have to adopt these amendments to this ordinance. You don't have to. We can table it until we've met the metric that we say is driving these decisions. We have not met it, and we're not even--
Hi, Dr. Rebecca Vandecop. I'm a family practice physician. I've been in Brookings practicing for 16 years. I'm probably going to present a very unpopular viewpoint tonight, but I am living and breathing this every day, and I love my community, and I want to keep my community safe, and I want to keep my community alive. And that's what we're trying to do in healthcare, and right now, we're terrified. I've got to be honest. I wish that all of you could spend one day living in my world and see what we see and hear what we hear. Patients are coming in. Healthy people are having long-term effects. I've got people who are three months after having COVID are still having adverse effects. We've had people in their younger or middle ages hospitalized. It's not just been the elderly. We will have people die in Brookings. We'll probably have children die. We will have young adults and middle-aged people die, and we'll have lots of elderly die. And what I would like to know from everybody here that doesn't believe in masks and doesn't think that we need to be doing anything is, what is the number of deaths that is acceptable to you? Because that's what we're looking at. There will be deaths, and I would like to know what the acceptable number is. Because to me, it's none. I don't want anybody to die from this, but that's what will happen. It takes a predictable path. What has been happening across the country, and I have been watching this closely with my colleagues nationwide, is you initially have a big outbreak amongst young people, and two weeks later, it moves into the middle-aged and elderly, and that's when we start having the hospitalizations, and that's when we start having the deaths. So if we're going to wait until the hospitalization number goes up, that will probably happen-- So if we're going to wait until that hospitalization number goes up, that will probably happen next week. And I will tell you, I don't want to be managing ventilators. I haven't done that for 16 years. My colleagues have not done that for many years. We're going to be put into positions to be doing things in medicine that we have not done for a long time. And I pray that we don't have to get to that point, but we will. This virus is real, and it's terrifying. We are seeing, the negative long-term effects are significant. People are having memory loss after the infection. People have cardiomyopathy. They're having damage to their heart. They're having long-term damage to their lungs. This is not made up. This is real. This is a new virus. We don't know everything about it, and we're still learning. And in the meantime, we have to do the best we can to protect our community until we know exactly what it is we're dealing with. So tomorrow, I get to spend my day in the respiratory clinic. I'll be wearing an N95 mask, a gown, a face shield, and two sets of gloves, and seeing all the respiratory cases that come into the clinic. And I'll probably test 40 to 60 people for COVID tomorrow. We are testing people freely. We are not limiting testing. So if you're concerned that the numbers are inflated, they're not. If people have had a contact and they want to be tested, we test. So, and we are doing the best we can to make sure that everybody has the care that they need. But I can tell you, it's not fun being in a respiratory clinic. It's a 10-hour day of not being able to take a bathroom break because I'm in my PPE. But I'm doing that because I love and care for my community, which is also why I choose to wear a mask when I'm out and about, because I love and care for my community. To me, that is an act of kindness and of caring for my fellow man. It doesn't hurt me to wear a piece of fabric on my face. It doesn't cause me any harm, but it can potentially protect somebody from an illness that I might have. The last thing I'd like to say is, you know, we would like to keep schools open. I imagine everybody wants to do that. We haven't really touched a whole lot on that. But as our teachers have to be quarantined because they've been exposed as our cases go up, we won't have anybody left to teach our children. So we all want them to be having face-to-face classes, but there won't be anybody left to teach them. We've got to get this under control. And these are hard decisions to make. These are decisions nobody wants to make. We've had to make very hard decisions in my world, too. So thank you for having this resolution there. I guess I support it. I hope that this does pass tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vandecop.
Isaiah Cravie, Champion Health Chiropractic. I want to make one correction. And I thought that that wouldn't happen tonight, but sometimes it does. These people are not here because they want to kill people. Period. Every time I walk through, people are touching their masks way more than I'm touching their face, every time I'm walking through a business. And when I hear people say, the people that are here tonight that are not wearing masks want to, like, hurt people or kill people, or they're doing it because they love their family, I'm also not wearing a mask because I love my family. But I am washing my hands and doing all those things because I love my family as well. Just to make a clarification on that. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Lynn. Just felt it was neat to talk to you guys tonight. I've been in a motorcycle accident, and I survived it. I've had cancer, and I've survived it. I put up a lot, and I've survived it. Every day, I live. I don't look forward to dying, but I'm not going to stop anybody from making me live more and love this country. And I think that you guys realize that with this crowd we have today, that we are very sincere and sane. Don't take our freedoms away. I don't live in Brookings, but I'll tell you, damn as it is a day strong, that if you guys pass this, small towns are going to flourish, because we don't want to support your town anymore. I'm not a president of a university. I can't grab something in my hand and force you politically. I like SDSU. I don't like their decisions. I don't like their philosophy in this. Are you teaching our kids this? Maybe that's not what we want. We want to live every day. If I die tomorrow, I die tomorrow on my terms.
Hi, Sarah Wilson again. I left off the last part of my speech because I didn't think anyone wanted to talk about death today, but it got brought up. And like Isaiah said, we're not here to say any amount of death is okay. So first, I'm going to challenge all of you as city council members, the individual that said that if you want to get tested, you can go and get tested. Call, call a Vera and try to get tested and see what they say. You're going to have to make up symptoms. You're going to have to make up somebody that you were exposed to to try to get tested. I'll tell you that. My family just lived and breathed it. People that know me just lived and breathed it. They tried to get tested. And unless you're yelling at them and forcing tests on their throat, they do not want to test you. So I'm going to challenge you. Don't tell them who you are. Just call and try to get tested. The second thing that I left off was to cite some data when we talk about deaths. This is directly from the CDC website. In 2017, which is the newest posted information for South Dakota, South Dakota had 217 flu and pneumonia deaths and 505 lower respiratory deaths. South Dakota death toll for COVID as of today is 169. The CDC also recently reported that 94% of COVID deaths had an average of 2.6 other conditions, such as flu or lower respiratory infections. We have no way of knowing if those 2.2 other, 2.6 other conditions would have caused death without COVID. But we do have historical data, and we have science. And again, so my ask today of the city council is that you guys make decisions based on facts and not out of fear and misplaced authority.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Jeffrey Tate, longtime resident Brookings, South Dakota. I just came up here to state that I applauded you guys' leadership initially in the early stages of the pandemic here. Brookings acted very quickly to try and limit and inhibit spread, or, sorry, losing my wording there. We minimized the impacts right out the gate. And I would like to state that I would like to keep 2017 enacted for the next 60 days, but I do not support the expansion of Resolution 20072. We've gone the whole summer, maybe averaging one to three cases a day after we reopened everything mostly back up. So that being said, I just want to take that into consideration. I've been in the trenches every day, wearing a mask, six to eight hours a day sometimes, six days a week. So it stinks. I'm doing it to try and protect community members. And I understand that no one wants to wear a mask. I don't think we need to make people wear masks, but we should strongly encourage mask wearing still. As to, I'm downtown quite frequently. I usually try and keep my distance from people I don't know. And I just had questions as regards to occupancy numbers. I'd noticed one business, their interior occupancy was 100 people at the half mark there, whereas the outside portion, which is like a third of the inside area square footage, was allowing 150 people. So I understand it is outside, but why does it make sense to cram 50 more people in a space 30% in size of the big space can only hold 100 people? Just something to think about, consistency across the board. Those are my thoughts, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Holoman. I've actually lived in Brookings since 2013. And this is the first time I've ever come to a city council meeting, because I feel very passionately about what's going on here. And I wasn't planning to speak, but after listening to everyone, I just feel like I need to speak. First of all, I lost my father when this pandemic began back in February, before people were really talking about COVID. My dad was, he had brain cancer and lung cancer, and he was going through chemotherapy and radiation simultaneously. He lived in St. Louis, Missouri. He lived alone. He was having a hard time just dealing with everything. So I went down to visit him for a week to make sure he was getting proper nutrition, to get him to his appointments and his doctor appointments. My father ended up dying, and we thought it was from chemotherapy and all the complications that come with cancer and things like that. But he had every single symptom, in retrospect, of COVID-19. And a few weeks after I came back, I was sick. My kids were sick. And my kids said, I'll come to see grandpa. And they live in Montana, Wisconsin. Everybody went home, and everybody was sick. None of us died. I'm 56 years old. If you're a healthy person, this is not likely to kill you. I mean, the scientific data shows us that. I actually researched the top 50 deaths in America. COVID didn't even make the list of the top 50 death causes in America. Why, if this is about our health and we're concerned about the health of our society and our city, why aren't we making recommendations to ban things that we know kill us, i.e. tobacco, i.e. a lot of fast food and processed foods, i.e. a lot of pharmaceuticals that are actually causing alternative symptoms? You're going to get cancer and die because you've got indigestion, so you're going to take a medication. I mean, we all know this goes on. My point is, we have to stop being ridiculous about things. I'm a business owner in Brookings. I own multiple businesses, and you might not know who I am, and I don't really care, because I'm not usually involved in politics. But I actually had to close one of my businesses, and I had a full-time employee and four part-time employees because of this. It was unsustainable. My other business, I kept open because I run it. I'm there. I'm working for free. And I have income from other businesses. If I didn't have income from those other businesses, this business would have to close, because people are afraid to go shopping. People are afraid to go out to eat. People are living in fear. You have to stop living in fear. We are all going to die. So be prepared, get right with God, or whatever you want to get right with. I mean, I could die walking across the street getting hit by a bus. Am I going to not walk across the street because I'm afraid of getting hit by a bus? No, I'm going to look both ways, twice. So let's wash our hands. Let's social distance. Let's do things that make sense without violating people's rights and destroying the financial fabric of a community, because there's much more at risk than people dying. And one death is too many. But people die every day from millions of different things. And we don't stop living because we're afraid they're going to die. So let's support our businesses. Let's support each other. Let's support our families. Let's support our teachers. Let's support our police officers. Let's support each person in this community. By the way, one last thing I'd like to say. I had a shoplifting incident at one of my retail stores. And guess what? I have an amazing security system, but I couldn't identify the person because they were wearing a mask. So on my business, I have a sign that says, if you come into my business, you can wear a mask if you want, but you take it down and you look in my camera. Thank you.
My name is Falla Kuntz, and I'm here for the other side of COVID. The side that took my family members, not because of COVID, but because of the mandates that you guys are putting into place, because I can't visit my loved ones. One of them died of sadness, whatever, because she was locked in a nursing home. One of them died because she couldn't get the medical care she needed, because she couldn't fly, because no one would let her. So she couldn't go to Colorado to get help. So she died of cancer. So there's other things involved here and not just this COVID thing. And you guys trying to protect the people that we don't even know who have it. The industries here in Brookings, South Dakota have got more COVID cases than anybody else in here that any of these businesses have ever had in their businesses. And where are they? Where are those news articles on the front pages? We don't see those. But one person at Cubby's shows up at nine o'clock until one o'clock, and it makes the front page. But yet, there's 15 other people in a business in town that are positive, and that doesn't make the frickin' front page? Why? I want to know where the fairness is in all of this, because I don't get it. And I don't understand why. We shut down for two months, and then we came up at 50%, so the college could come back. We did our job. We did it. We did it perfectly. They came back. And now they want us to shut down and not get our income again? Why is this right? I want to know what the fairness is. I want to know why. Last week, we had a member of SDSU, a city council member, a policeman, and a security guard from the college go to one of my rental units, pull my kids out of their house, and have a discussion with them about not having any more than 10 people. They were in there doing their homework, and they got called out of their home. That is not right. And that means you guys knew that this was going to pass long before we got here tonight, because that happened last Thursday. None of this is fair, and I want to know why.
I'm Randy Johnson. I'm from Brookings. And I just wanted to say that I don't support this ordinance, nor do I support the amendment that you'll be discussing next. One of the earlier speakers suggested that we table this action or these actions for tonight, and I would encourage you not to table anything. I think we have a crowd here that's here for this reason, and we want to know what's going to happen with this tonight. Thank you.
I'm Laura Mills. I live here in Brookings. I got one question for all of you guys. I think, I believe, you had your mind made up when we came here tonight. You were going to continue on with this. My question is, if you pass this, it immediately goes into effect, right? You are immediately in violation of your own, because you've organized all these people to be here, and I'm going to call 911, and you guys are going to get arrested because you violated your own. What are you people doing?
My name is Nancy Flynn, and I live in Brookings. I am not living in fear of COVID. I am living with impatience with COVID. But I am willing to put up with an extension of this ordinance.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hi, I'm Tim Jensen, business owner here in town. Most of you already know my feelings on this. I sent you a letter back way when this started. My feelings haven't changed whatsoever. The only question I have is in regards to these meetings. I run the youth football group. I have 100 little kids. I like to play football. Just need to know where I stand on that in regards to this ordinance. So if you can answer that, this upcoming ordinance you guys are voting on tonight, because I have 100 kids together over the age of five, I'm not going to put them in masks. So I need to know if that will only make it their option to play, or if I can continue to play, because the four other towns that I play don't have those restrictions and aren't limiting anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Lyle Bolches, and I live here in Brookings. And I'm kind of with him. I have a son that's going to be playing football. And so does that mean also you guys with this mask thing are going to limit the high school, because that's not a public place? There's going to be over 10 kids. Is all this going to be tied in? And I guess another thing, my thought is, I think we, you're hearing everybody's opinion tonight. I think you're hearing a lot of dissent on these things. And I guess my main thing is, I guess if everyone thinks you're overextending your power, then maybe us as the citizens of Brookings need to take our power back, and we recall all you guys and have a new election. If you're not going to listen to the people in Brookings.
Good evening, council. My name is Gretchen Wybel. I've lived in Brookings for about I've lived in Brookings for about two, two and a half years. And, you know, back when this first started, this so-called pandemic, they first came out saying N95 masks won't protect you from this virus because it's so miniscule. So all you guys with these masks on, it's not going to protect you from this virus. You may feel that it's protecting you, but it's not. Also, I just wanted to bring up just a little bit of a statistic here that I did this afternoon. Brookings County estimated population is 36,360 for 2020. Brookings County, the active cases and the recovery, those two combined, is 362. Okay? So you take that number, the 362, and divide it by 36,360, and you get .0099. That's how many people per 36,000 have the COVID. And so, I mean, to shut down businesses, small businesses, while keeping Walmarts and Hy-Vee and Runnings and Lowe's open is really a disservice for the community of Brookings.[697.32][697.32][applause] I mean, I moved to Brookings because of the small-town feel, because I came from the Twin Cities. And if you know what Minnesota's doing, I mean, if you hear the news, where Dr. Birx met with Tim Walz, the governor of Minnesota, or I should say, the dictator of Minnesota... She doesn't understand why the cases keep going up when they has a mask mandate. Why are they going up? Why are the death rates going up? Why is everything going up, up, up when you have a mask mandate? Because it doesn't work.[738.43][738.43][applause] Thank you for your time.[747.51][747.51][applause]
Good evening. My name's Jason Boes, local business owner and a longtime lifelong member of this community. I don't envy your position. You folks are in a real tough spot here. This is very challenging, and thank you for your service to this community. And especially, I want to say thanks to Leah Brink for your continued voice of reason throughout this summer.[781.01][781.01][applause] And welcome new council member Joey Collins. Thank you.[791.63][791.63][applause] A lot of this has been said already, pretty much everything. You know, what are we afraid of? I mean, there are viruses. You've heard plenty of that. Viruses are around here. We live with them every day. It's a way of life. Take your vitamin C, your zinc, whatever. I'm not a doctor. That's what I do and go on with business. The only number that we pay attention to or that we've been instructed to is hospitalizations. And you've heard a ton of numbers. The numbers can be skewed whichever way you want them to be. Six hospitalizations, my understanding, is since March. Okay? We've spent lots of money on this upgrading our medical facility. We should be able to handle some things. You know, this virus, are we going to try to get this virus down to zero? I mean, it's never going to be zero. It's never going away. We just have to deal with it. What are we going to do? What are the numbers going to mean when strep throat comes around, mononucleosis, H1N1, and just the regular flu, and a whole host of other viruses? You know, it was mentioned there's a lot of activities going on around the state, all over, all around us. There's activities going on where people are getting together and enjoying life, having Why can't we do the same? With regards to SDSU, and I understand all the concerns, but, you know, as a community, we love SDSU. We all look forward, we look forward to SDSU students coming back to school. It's a real fun time, the fall. It's a real fun time for people to get together and see those kids back and all the activities. But this year, we shut down, SDSU canceled all the activities on campus. Everything on campus shut down. So what are they going to do? I mean, these kids, I had two kids going to SDSU last year, a senior and a freshman, got to learn, I didn't go to college, but I got to see my senior. He had a good experience because of all of his activities that he were in there, and that's what kept him in a four-year school. My freshman, he didn't participate in any activities. Now he's in the Marine Corps. Hurrah. Very proud of him. So now we want to regulate all the off-campus activities. So we, no activities on campus. What are they going to do? Look for places to go have fun and socialize off-campus. It's all part of the experience, but we're going to kick them out of there, too, and send them on back. Where are they supposed to go and what are they supposed to do? These students are paying. These are paying customers. They're paying to come here to SDSU and the Brookings for this experience, because this is a wonderful place. So maybe we could start with getting our activities back going up there. When they leave town, which a certain number will, how are we going to get them back? You know, how are we going to tell them, oh, hey, it's all clear? The whistle is blown. It's all clear. Come on back now. And will they come? You know, the decisions that are made right here have long-term implications on all of I don't know that we can overstate what this winter is going to look like already for people around here in our activities and the arts and the athletics and everything that we've already restricted, and what it's going to look like economically next year. It's all getting impacted right now, as many people have stated already. Mask-wearing, and again, I'll state mask-wearing is individual choice. So is attending gatherings. That's an individual choice. If you don't feel good, stay home. Very simple. Again, I want to thank you for your time, and I want to thank the community of Brookings for coming out and experiencing democracy.[1072.83][1072.83][applause] Thank you very much.[1076.13][1076.13][applause]
Thank you, Jason.
Hello. My name is Rick Wyble. I just drove from my consulting gig over in Minneapolis-St. Paul. I have a computer consulting business. So I understand what you guys are heading towards. I've lived the dystopia of Minneapolis-St. Paul. I live here in Brookings, but my computer consulting business is in the Twin Cities metro area. And I'm going to point out a few things here. Number one, for those of you students, please go to the dictionary. "The definition of science is the study of, not the answers to." So that's where you guys come in, where you look at the data, and you have to make a competent decision. What is right for our community? But you also have an important document that starts with "life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Yes, life is number one. But as our medical professions have already stated, five hospitalizations, that's it. It's still a low number, according to the state website. I was a mayor for the city of St. Boniface for 10 years. I understand where you sit. I stood and supported my council and my community during the H1N1 virus outbreak. So far, you guys are overreacting. It's not the right direction. You also have to consider the psychological damage that is being done. I'll also point out that one of your next steps is kind of laughable. If you are intending on stopping serving drinks at 10:00 p.m., but you're not actually closing the bars, guess what's going to happen, students? Last call, 10 rounds for everybody.[1207.15][1207.15][laughter] So obviously, things are not well thought out, and if you're unwilling to serve and do things the right way, I brought a special notebook that I am willing to serve the city of Brookings as mayor and lead us out of this dystopian environment that Minnesota's already
My name is Corbin Mahaffey. I am a student at SDSU. Last year, I went to school in Arizona for my first year. I was involved in a car accident last summer that took out my entire first semester. Down in Arizona, I had surgery and came back halfway through my second semester of school. We got sent home because of this virus. I came to SDSU to try and kind of relive, per se, my first year. I joined Greek life there, and with this ordinance right here, that would limit my 100% Greek life and end up sending me home. I have no other reason to be here except for the Greek life. That's what I'm here for. You guys, putting this ordinance in place eliminates my entire reason for being here. So please, do not do this. Coming from me as a student, I don't speak for any of my other student body, any of my other brothers in my Greek life, but for me, please do not do this.
Yeah, so, hi. Name's Alexander. People call me Big Mac. This is not supposed to be a joke. I'm wearing Santa shorts. I'm sorry. But I come from Arizona, so that's a couple thousand miles, well, not a couple thousand, but a thousand miles, 100 and something miles. I have to spend $400 to come up here, and then $400 to go back home. I'm hoping SDSU doesn't close, because having to go last year, back home, and then having to come back up, then coming back home, costs me almost $800. I can't do that while I'm having to do tuition. Now, you know, I know Barry Dunn spends a lot of money on a house that he doesn't even live in. Spends $300,000, something like that. He gets paid $300,000, over $300,000. Now, my tuition, I'm pretty sure, is just paid for him. So is a whole bunch of other students. I don't think that's very fair. I think my Greek life is actually, you know, my fraternity is actually a pretty nice fraternity. We're a lot of guys, and we're not, yeah, we're not that many guys. Not that great. The school's coming after the Greek life. We're worried, because as the age progresses, and you know, as we live on, people think of Greek life as, oh, it's just like the movies. It's probably like Animal House. No. It's not. We constantly keep track of our progress on school. We constantly try to make sure that we're doing good, and we put steps in line to make sure we don't get COVID. Now, I understand I'm just kind of agreeing with you guys, but I think even shutting down the bars would make an uproar to town. And I've heard in 1991 and 1992, there were riots. And I feel like I don't want to experience any riots, because I already came from riots all the way in Phoenix. I got hit by tear gas. I got hit by rubber bullets. I'm a big guy I can handle. But other people, I don't think so. And I'm afraid that I don't want to see that. I don't know what Brookings police can do. I just don't want to see other police officers, you know, do anything worse to other people.
Good evening, council. My name is Jade Withers. I'm a lifelong resident of Brookings, and I'm proud to say that. One subject that I don't think has been hit on very heavily tonight is the impact on mental health. I have a child that has some rapidly changing mental health issues from a year ago, from six months ago. Six months ago, she had anxiety. Now we are in counseling once a week. Today, she was in the counselor's office twice. Why? Because of this new normal that we have. And I think everybody in this room, to some degree, is having difficulty on a mental health basis. Her counselor told, her personal therapist told me today that this is not just kids are resilient and they'll bounce back. She warned me that the effects of this, closing down, we did not take our children to Hy-Vee or Walmart. My husband works in a nursing home, so we're very careful about going out into the community. We make limited trips during the week, because we know his exposure is higher than other people. So we are trying to be careful. He wears an N95 mask at work. He's had residents pass away. So it's very real to our family. But the fact that my children don't have a normal social life has impacted them severely. And I was warned today that it will take years for my seven-year-old to recover from this. That is from our mental health professional. We're at weekly visits, weekly. $220 a visit. My business is about 50% of what it was before COVID. So you can imagine the financial impact on my family. So while we talk a lot about economics, and we talk about what if we get COVID? Yeah, I don't wish that on anybody. I've got people in my family who are immunocompromised. I have another daughter with asthma. Okay? So I don't, I take all this in. I try to see all sides. But I can't ignore the fact that my daughter is going to have years of repercussions of not being able to go out in public, not being able to go to birthday parties. She's seven. Her risk is very, very, very low. I think we've had plenty of evidence presented today about that. But yet, she can't go to a birthday party because there might be more than 10 people. In fact, at recess, she can only play with her own classmates. And she's so nervous about getting off the bench to go play with them, to ask other kids to play with them. She had a mental breakdown today. Okay? There's nothing in our household that would have, we don't come from a broken household. We don't have alcohol abuse. We don't have, you know, parents going this way and that way. We have a very, you know, two-parent standard household, and yet this affects us just like it does anyone else. No one is exempt from this. And I can tell you that the statistics show a 1,000% increase in people calling suicide hotlines, and these people are making half the money they used to. They're now faced with this. I think we've heard plenty of anecdotal stories about this tonight. But guess what happens when suicides increase, when addictions increase? That not only leaves us with holes in our hearts, but it also leaves our communities with another public health risk, does it not? And I'd also like to hit on just one last point that I think has been stated but not clearly enough tonight, is my disappointment in some of the responses I get from council members and the mayor. When I email you, or, and you guys have heard from me quite a bit this summer, I appreciate Nick's response today in saying, "I will take a look at your point of view." I appreciate that. Sincerely do. But I'm disappointed in some other members. And I'll just read you what my employee received today from one of you. She responded to me that she wishes she could agree with me, but I should use a different point of view. That, to me, is very disappointing. What that means to me is that their mind was made up and that nobody's time tonight matters. Nobody's time. The citizens who are here, I would argue, there are more people here and who have signed that petition than voted in the last election. I mean, how ridiculous is that? If you don't hear us, then you are deaf. So I appreciate, and I would like to reiterate, that in the future, with any issue, that you keep an open mind. You don't represent your narrow group of friends and your political affiliation. This isn't a Republican or a Democrat city council, or at least it's not supposed to be. You're supposed to hear all sides and take that into consideration, and not make a decision until you have heard from the voices who elected you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else waiting, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Council, do you need a break? Counsel, do you need a break? Obviously, none of you are old like me, but, okay. Counsel, comments on the second reading in action on ordinance 20-17?
Mayor Corbett?
Councilman Wendell?
Thank you. And I'm gonna try to just focus my comments on the ordinance that we're considering right, all right? I'm going to try to just focus my comments on the ordinance we're considering right now, because I think if we bounce back and forth, it'll be a little confusing. So, I'm gonna focus my comments on the extension of ordinance 20-017, which would extend existing ordinance. I do want to start by saying that I genuinely appreciate the level of engagement that the community has brought forward on this issue. And I'm not just saying that 'cause I feel like I've got to say thank you. Genuinely, we received hundreds of emails and text messages and phone calls. Clearly, there are many of you here this evening that have a vested interest in the outcome of the decisions that we make. This is challenging, and it's, it's difficult to live in Brookings right now. It's difficult to serve in Brookings right now. I don't know that any of us could have anticipated that this year would look like it does, but it's the work that we're all here to do together. And I do think that one of the joys of serving in Brookings is that we have a really engaged citizenry. When topics come up that people are interested in, we hear from you. I think it makes our deliberations better. I'm not going to promise you that I'll vote all the ways that you might hope that I will this evening, but I, I tried really hard to respond to every single email I got last night. And today, I tried to answer as many phone calls as I could today. I tried to have thoughtful conversations with you to hear your perspective. And genuinely, I came in this evening not certain whether or not I support all of the amendments that are on the table. What I will tell you is that I do support the extension of the existing ordinance. And I want to just note a couple of things that were mentioned in reference to why I would support the extension of the existing ordinance. There's been a lot of conversation this evening around hospitalizations. I think there's a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding around hospitalizations in general. We've asked a lot of questions of our health system and medical professionals so we can understand why we continue to hear from health professionals that are concerned, how we evaluate hospitalizations when we're not seeing them escalate. What we have continued to hear is that hospitalizations are a lagging indicator. Typically, if you get a confirmed positive case, it may be eight to 10 days before that individual may require hospitalization. That leads me to believe we're in a window right now where lifting restrictions would put us in greater risk, because the tremendous spike we've seen in positive cases, if we just follow the trend lines in every other state in the country, most likely will lead to a spike in hospitalizations in eight to 10 days. We could wait a week, but then we're outside of the window where we could take decisive action. We continue to hear from our health community that that's what they're asking us for. It's the only way to protect the community. And so, I understand that you're frustrated because you're not seeing hospitalizations. I think the benefit of living where we do is that we've had some time. I think we all heard the alarm early on when we did not know very much about COVID-19. We now understand not everything about the virus, but we have some better understanding about how it spreads through communities. We know that it spreads more quickly, and the pattern looks different in densely populated metropolitan areas in our coastal communities. I think it's why we saw outbreaks in Seattle, in New York, in Los Angeles. But as time has marched on, we have seen the devastating effects of the virus move through the deep south. It's moved into the southwest. It's moved into the Midwest, and now it's in the upper Midwest. And regardless of whether or not you're in a red state or a blue state, whether or not your community is densely populated or sparsely populated, the impact has been relatively the same if you don't keep some type of precautions in place. These work. Wearing masks work. And I, I know that the audience in the room tonight questions whether or not that's true. I understand that. I'm not gonna change your mind on masks tonight. I also got hundreds of emails today from folks begging us to implement a citywide mask mandate. But those are folks that are concerned about the spread of infectious disease, so they're not here tonight in person. Absolutely, that's your perspective, and I understand it. But I will tell you that I'm supportive of the continuation of this particular ordinance, because I believe we are in a window right now where, as a community, we can make some difficult decisions. They're hard on everybody, and I recognize that. I think our other option is to ignore the spread of the virus and just hope that it doesn't lead to a spike in cases. It doesn't lead to continued hospitalizations, and it doesn't lead to us having to take more difficult action as a city, or see the closure of our K-12 schools and a move back to remote learning, the closure of our university and a reversion back to remote learning. We have an opportunity to take some measured steps tonight aimed to prevent that from happening. That's why I would vote to support the continuation of ordinance 20-017. I think we've said all along, his question was, for those of you listening at home, if we don't see a spike in hospitalizations, what will our action be then? We've continued to monitor the statistics. We've continued to rely on experts. It would depend on what the spike in cases is, because if we continue to see a spike on-- I can't promise you that we'll hold another meeting in eight days, because there's a whole lot of different factors that will impact our decision. Your convers, your conversation has been focused on hospitalizations. That is the narrative that has driven tonight's conversation, but we've been clear from the beginning that we've looked at lots of different indicators. Right now, we have the highest-- and right now-- I'm just gonna circle back and--
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but for those folks speaking in the audience, I can't hear them on the phone. And so, if somebody could either dictate to me what's being said by the audience or encourage them to approach the mic, I just, as, as another council member who wants to be part of this dialogue, I can't hear the people that are screaming from the audience.
I think the other note that I would make is there's a variety of metrics that we've been advised we should be using on the decisions that we make. One of them-- I'll share, I'll, I'll share one of them with you. One of them is the reproduction rate. We're getting it from our health-- All right. I, I'm gonna ask if you could approach the mic if you have a question. I think it'd be easier for folks listening at home. His question is, what are our sources? So, one of the indicators that the Centers for Disease Control, the Department of Health have told us to use as whether or not we should keep these ordinances in place is the reproduction rate, the likelihood that one infected person in our community will lead to additional infections. The Centers for Disease Control and the White House Coronavirus Task Force have told states and communities across the country that if that is anything north of 1.0, you should enact strong restrictions, stronger than anything we're considering this evening. We've tried to step back and take a more measured, realistic approach. South Dakota right now has the highest reproduction rate in the country as of today. We're at a 1.4, which-- that really is their decision. And, you know, I'm gonna have to, you should call those folks.
Where was the rest of South Dakota's upticks? So, so to that, the rest of South, South Dakota, for the most part, opened up. Where was their uptick in cases? Where was their overwhelming of hospitals? Where was any of this happening? Yet Brookings, which is the most shut down, is seeing the upticks.
I think we've got a different nature of population, given that we're the home to the state's largest public institution. We did know that the return of South Dakota State University students would lead to an increase in cases. We also have listened to our community, the university has and the city has. We understand what a tremendous economic driver the institution is to this community. You can't extrapolate them. Folks have been talking about just send the students home and it would fix our problem. I don't think that's gonna solve anybody's economic problem. We are trying to put measures in place this evening that ideally can prolong the number of days that South Dakota State University can stay in session, that can prolong the number of days that the K-12 school can continue in-person instruction in our community. We heard from you, while we know that if-- I think it'd be helpful if you approached the mic if you have a comment tonight.
And also, during, during the public forum, the council let everybody speak and interrupt. Please let council members speak.
I would just make maybe one last note. I, I'm really trying to, I, from the beginning of this, I have tried to be a problem solver. I've truly tried to focus on how we can be solution-oriented. I've tried to rely on data and science and facts. And I understand that that is just--
Well, that, that speaks to the reason I came up here to, my first question was, are you getting data only from the SDSU, like the, the lady who spoke earlier?
We're not.
Or are you getting it from multiple places? And if so, from multiple places, are they both telling you the same thing? There's one of them telling you something different, and you're only listening to the one that you want to hear?
Your question was related to our data sources. We're receiving data from our health system. We're receiving data from the state Department of Health. We're receiving data from experts at South Dakota State University that are experts in epidemiology and infectious disease control. We are gathering as much information as we can, and the, the message is consistent.
Everybody has said the same thing.
A citywide mask mandate would control the spread of the virus. That's been the consistent message.
Every single source that you've gotten it from? That's, that's not, guess what I've heard from even these meetings with other personnel from healthcare saying, "This is not right." So, obviously, I, yeah, I don't know.
Councilmember Bacon?
Mayor Corbett and everyone here, I just want you all to understand that in addition to the 250-plus people that have come, and we appreciate that, we want to hear you, you're passionate on this, but you need to understand that there are a minimum of 250-plus individuals who would also like to be here testifying. A number of them came and turned around and left because they weren't being respected by everybody wearing masks and--
Oh, my poor feelings. So, when are you gonna show some of this information?
I was trying to carry--
I have the right-- Can I have the respect that we've given you tonight for you to listen? I think that we also deserve respect. We've respected you and listened to every single one of you. We're glad that, we're glad that you came, but there are other individuals in this community who feel differently, but they did--
And where are they? Where are they? Why aren't they at the microphone?
I'm trying to explain to you--
Why aren't they standing at the microphone?
--that a number of them came and they left, because the room is--
That's their prerogative, as you would say.
--and you're not wearing masks and respecting them.
So, if you have all this information from all these different places, there's a TV there, there's another one back there, and another one back there. When are you gonna start displaying it?
If your question is about access to the data, which I think it is, right?
My question is, is you have all this information. Why are you not displaying it?
Do you ever click on the attachments that are attached to our agendas? Lots of explanations, lots of data, lots of--
Why aren't they up here right now in front of all these people that are asking these questions? Why do I have to go find it? Why can't you give it to us?
I apologize.
Apologize? You guys look silly with those diapers on your heads up there. Come on, get real.
We have a right to not wear a mask. But I just don't, I didn't, I didn't see anybody. I'd like to speak on behalf of all these people out here wearing red, coming to you guys with our concerns. I didn't see anybody disrespecting anybody. If your guys' masks work, then what are you guys concerned about? That's, that's what my question is for you guys. If your guys' masks work, why do I have to wear one?
Okay. City attorney, you had a comment?
Yeah, you can proceed with the council comments at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Grodson's. Hello. Okay. And I just want to say, like, I think you guys are doing a great job. The only reason I'm not wearing a mask is because I actually just recovered from COVID. So, like, I'm in, like, the safe area for three months, the doctor said. But I would just like to say, like, it's just so disrespectful that everyone's saying that, like, people with immune diseases don't have a right then to feel safe. And it's also SDSU's fault. I am an SDSU student, but I'm taking a gap semester because I think that's what should have happened. And I don't know if that's really in your guys' power to dictate, like, whether or not what SDSU does, but they should have canceled school, because there should not have been this many people coming into Brookings, 'cause that's what really affected all of this. But I would also just like to say that, like, as a student, that's why I took the break. That's why I was working full-time instead of going to school, because I didn't want to get sick. I still did anyway. I had to be hospitalized, because I have asthma, and my oxygen went from what's supposed to be at from a 97 to 100, all the way down to an 85. COVID is a very serious thing. I don't think a lot of people are taking it serious enough. I know a lot of people, including my roommates, who really would have wanted to come to be in the not-red side of things, but we're trying to be safe. And so, I was like, you know what? I am safe technically. I'm gonna come here. I'm gonna show my opinion, because we're just scared to, because other people like to just speak out off of everything and not hold your words and take turns and be diplomatic. But I just would like to thank you guys for taking the time to be here and being so respectful and listening to our opinions. But I do think that this is the right choice to make this motion and have everything get shut down, because that's the only way to stop the spread. And that's our goal, is to stop the spread. You can stop the spread. I am from Seattle. You can stop the spread. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council members, any other council member have comments or? Okay, Councilman Niemeyer?
All right. I appreciate everybody coming here tonight. The last couple days have been pretty overwhelming. You know, can you, can you be quiet? I give everybody their chance. I have not said a word until now. Give me the respect too, sir. Stop it. Thanks for coming tonight. It's been an overwhelming couple days. We've gotten a lot of emails. We've gotten a lot of response from this. I came in here tonight with an open mind. I hadn't made a decision on anything. But now, I'm gonna tell you now, I'm, I'm planning on extending the ordinance that's But as far as the other ones go, if this is the mentality that we've got out here, it's gonna be hard for our police officers to enforce, and I don't want to put them in that situation. I think it's very intimidating tonight.
Can I just say one comment, please?
No, ma'am. Please let me say what I need to say. I give everybody else your time. Okay? I'm, I'm about to the point where--
Respectfully, Nick, I just wanted to say to you--
The public hearing is closed.
--that you said that you spoke to many healthcare providers. Well, there have been healthcare providers that have spoke up, but they have been disciplined, and there have been consequences, so nobody else will speak out. And I think you needed to know that.
Okay. As the city council reminded us, the public comments are over. Councilman Niemeyer, did you have more to say?
Yeah. I guess, you know, the, the thing is, is we, we were mandating masks on SDSU campus. Masks are required to go to the public school systems. If our numbers uptick to the point where the school can't keep our children safe or their employees safe, they're gonna have to go back to online. How many of you out there are gonna have to stay at home to help your child online to get an education? And, you know, I, I guess, you know, the mask thing too is, is, I talked about this before, and when we reviewed this once before. It's only common courtesy to wear a mask in front of everybody else. And then, and I know a lot of you disagree that these things don't work. But my friend and doctor that I have, is a personal doctor, says it does. I have to believe him. I can't imagine he would lie to me. So, I'm gonna still continue doing this, and I hope that you guys have the courtesy at least enough to keep six-foot distancing, do some of the, the recommendations for CDC. I, I think that's only fair. And, and this is, this has been, like I said, overwhelming for me. And to be honest with you, if I knew what I was gonna go through for the last six months, I probably wouldn't have ran for council again. But I found-- but I, I realized that this is an important thing. I've got tough decisions to make, and that's to represent all of you and everyone else in this town. And I think that it's important, and, and, and I don't know if anybody else has been, but I'm watching emails coming in to me yet. Couple people had emailed, said, "We were here, but we were so intimidated, there wasn't enough masks, people wearing masks," that I didn't feel my-- enough masks, people wearing masks," that I didn't feel my, I felt that they were at risk in their health. There's also another email that came out, and I'm just going to whip it out there. Harvard basically suggests that South Dakota shuts down immediately. We are the third highest in the tick, and Nick said that. Now, you can go ahead and laugh all you want, but tell that to all the southern states that were told not to open up when they did. So, you know, and I disagree with the governor, I'm sorry. I'm not. I get that, but why have a virus go after it too?
Guys, guys, let them finish till we get this done, okay? We've made our point, nobody likes it, nobody agrees with them, they've already made up their mind over here, that's why they're sitting over here.
Point of order.
Okay? Just let it go, let them finish till we get out of here.
Sir, thank you for the help, but again, the public comments have stopped, so Councilmember Brink.
You guys, thank you for being here. I would like to say that it would be helpful to the cause if you're respectful of people speaking, of each other speaking. That's how a public meeting is conducted, and we need to abide by that in order to be credible and taken seriously. I want you to know that I had a sleepless night last night, and I spent the day in Pierre with this gentleman right here trying to do training for our job as city councilors to try to do that better, and we couldn't focus at all on that because our phones were blowing up the entire day and we were hearing from people. And I want you to know that this is a terrible position for us to be in. It sucks, quite frankly, and there are no good solutions here. There's the principle of double effect, where when you make a decision that helps some, it can also at the same time harm others, and we're not being honest with ourselves if we don't acknowledge that in the case of making ordinances that restrict what is perceived as individuals' personal liberties and the right to quietly enjoy their residential property. That all being said, this is a nuanced decision. I do not believe COVID is a hoax. I do not believe that it doesn't exist. I am not some uneducated buffoon up here just trying to, I don't know, have a good time playing at city council. So, I know that what my views are are going to disappoint a lot of people that I know in the community, and that's a risk I'm willing to take because I believe in your liberty and your right to choose for yourselves. Now, what I don't want to see happen is that this council feels compelled to shut down the entire town again. I told them in public meetings in March that when we shut down the first time, if we did it too soon and too much, there's no way it would be sustainable. There's no way we could ride this out. Guess what? Here we are. I personally knew cases would go up when school came back into session. It's just pure mathematics, it just, it makes sense. I don't believe anyone is out there intentionally trying to spread this disease to others. I do believe most of you want to protect yourselves, protect your families, and do so by making your own choices, but it's complicated, and I'm not blind to what our medical professionals are saying. And yes, we're hearing primarily from an epidemiologist that is employed by SDSU and also from the Brookings Health System, which is the Brookings Health System. There are other sources too, but those are the sources that are primarily being listened to. I don't want to do this. I will vote to extend the existing ordinance tonight, but I absolutely do not agree with any of these amendments that are proposed, and the reasons for that are because they are unenforceable, completely unequal, illogical, poorly written, and not only that, there's no exit strategy, they're unsustainable, and I don't want to put our law enforcement in the position of having to go door-to-door and ask you what you're doing tonight in your house. I don't think that's fair to them. And I will tell you, the last time I made this comment in a public meeting, I was argued with, but in the shared city council email that we all share, all seven of us have visibility to that, I personally counted today about, and I'm only talking about the ones that came to all seven of us, not any that came to me individually, I will say about 125 emails I saw at the time of coming into this meeting at 6:30 wanted us to create more restrictions for all of you, about 125 of those, as opposed to about 75 that were highly against any of those restrictions. So, a little bit more people were emailing us to enforce restrictions. However, that doesn't take into account the 250 of you that took time out of your lives, your night, to come here and show us in person what you think, and the almost 1,800 individuals that signed a petition about this in less than 24 hours. That's astonishing. That is more people than typically ever pay attention to anything that we do. So, I feel that as an elected body, we have to take that seriously, and we have to listen to those voices, but it's not a binary. It's not a good and bad, it's not a this and that. There's a lot of shades of gray in here, and I want you to all be responsible, and SDSU students, I want you to be responsible. I don't want you to get sent home. I don't want us to go to Phase Two. I don't want SDSU to have to close. I don't want our students to get sent back home from the schools, not at all. So, let's behave ourselves and let's be responsible. Let's take care of ourselves and take care of each other like the good citizens that we are, and I hope you can understand the position I'm trying to navigate here tonight, and I can promise you, it's not easy, and I do appreciate everyone who's taken the time to be here and my fellow councilors in this.
Councilman Collins?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening, I appreciate it. We've got a lot of emails, so I apologize for not being able to go through and respond to your emails because of the short notice and because I was gone as well. I don't take this decision lightly whatsoever, but I'm not trying to be dramatic here, but, you know, almost 30 years ago, I fought in a war for people's rights, and I'm not going to take away your rights. I want to be, release your voice up here and so that I hear you, I understand what you're saying, and I will vote no this evening.
Please, please call the roll. Oh, Holly, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I do want to say, echo some of the sentiments that have already been said. We had an absolutely countless number of emails, phone calls, text messages, people reaching out on social media, contacting about these issues tonight. I want to thank everybody who reached out and everybody who attended in person. I think that these decisions are not easy, and those of us who sit on this council, we are just seven individuals that are also members of this community, and we can't make these decisions without the comments, the feedback, the care that everybody gives when they comment on these kinds of very important topics. I do want to apologize for anybody who I have not yet had the ability to respond to via email or text message. It has been extremely challenging to keep up with that today. As has already been stated, these decisions are not easy. They keep us awake at night, and it's because I think we can all see the values and all the opinions that are being brought forward, and we as council have to try and balance all of those opinions along with the data and the information that's presented. As has already been stated, we have been receiving guidance not only from the State Department of Health, but also from experts from Avera locally in Brookings, from Sanford locally in Brookings, from our Brookings Health System, from multiple epidemiologists, and that guidance and that expertise has been absolutely critical as we navigate a pandemic because I myself am not a medical professional, and so I rely heavily on that expertise and knowledge that they provide. As an individual who in this community greatly supports local and small business, my desire tonight is to implement or continue policies that will help us to keep those businesses open, to help us keep our K-12 school system open, and to help us keep SDSU open, because as we know, this community has to be able to function in order for our economy to be able to function, and I truly believe that if we don't do something soon, if we don't do something now, tonight, then we will find ourselves in a couple of weeks in a position where we are forced to maybe take further consequences, such as those that are currently recommended for communities like Brookings by White House guidance, by CDC guidance. As Ope mentioned, there's a Harvard study that has come out encouraging South Dakota to shut down, and I think everybody, both in the room and on this council, wants desperately to avoid that. So, I will be voting in favor of extending this ordinance, primarily because I want to avoid further shutdown in the future.
Okay, thank you. Now, please call the roll.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
No.
Corbett?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Okay, ordinance 20-17 is extended. Calling the city manager now to introduce an ordinance 20-19.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilmembers. Phase Two is the next more restrictive ordinance. It regulates closure of bars, restaurants, salons, bowling alleys, gyms, and recreational activities. City of Brookings utilized metrics and guidelines for transition between phases. Once again, these are all located on our website under the COVID tab. These metrics include positive rates, healthcare capacity, testing abilities, and mitigation. Currently, all metrics, as noted earlier tonight, have been triggered with the exception of hospitalization. Over the course of the past week, SDSU and public schools have commenced. Brookings' numbers and rates of positive have increased substantially, and I've heard that this increase is due to SDSU student arrivals. Though SDSU students do contribute to this increase, I should state that the city has been advised that existing community also contributes to the increase more than is assumed. As of Monday, the seven-day positive was 34%, as of today, it's 38%. The desire rate is 3% to 5%. As of today, Brookings County had 362 cases with 194 recovered and approximately 168 active. This past week, Brookings designation was changed from moderate to substantial. Jake, if you can progress the slide real quick. These are our current phases. As noted before, we're in Phase Three. The next more aggressive restrictive phase is Phase Two, which does shut down bars, restaurants, and other facilities here in this town. Jake, you want to go and progress to the next one? Daily, the COVID report, one of these slides here before you today, is updated on our website and given out via social media. This slide shows the impact of past council legislation. It was asked earlier, what are the results of our legislation? And you can see the dates and how things recovered, but as you can see, prior to the ordinance provided, a good outcome throughout June and July had occurred until school commenced. Now, amendments are warranted to reduce the spread of COVID. Staff does recommend the following amendments. Place restrictions on all residents gathering larger than 10 persons. This impacts residents only. The language takes into consideration those related from the same household, and the regulation does not impact places of worship, schools, or businesses. I've had a lot of questions of that here recently because of an email that went out. It does limit the sale of alcohol at 10:00 p.m. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. This includes bars, restaurants, and retail as well. It does also require masks for events, requires city permit, that requires a city permit where six-foot social distancing can't be achieved, and this includes things like our parades, our 5Ks, those type of things that require closure of our city streets and those type of permits. It does require masks on all indoor businesses and indoor public places where six-foot social distancing cannot be achieved. Residents do not have to wear the mask during eating, drinking, or if health conditions warrant. The virus spreads quickly. Ideally, the city would have preferred to give more advance notice of tonight's meetings and enactment of any potential regulations. I respectfully accept any criticism of staff as this is a fluid process to react to our community's increase in infections. I would like to comment that if, in the next seven to 10 days, any enactment of amendments do not assist in reducing COVID growth, I will have to recommend moving to Phase Two. That's something I do not want to do. Want to do whatever we can to prevent the closure of bars, restaurants, casinos, salons, recreational facilities, and everything else located in Phase Two. So, tonight's amendments and the actions are meant to reduce the spread as much as possible while allowing some forms of business to occur rather than jumping just to Phase Two. Would that be more than happy to answer any questions, Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, the way that we handle a first reading, there is no vote taken, but the public can comment on that, so what I'm going to do first is ask the councilmembers, yeah, where they're at on these amendments, if they'd like to strike any of them from the ordinance, and then we'll ask the public to go ahead and speak to any concerns they have on whatever the final product is, and then the council will have an opportunity to speak. And I should mention, so I don't forget, that, as I said earlier, we will not be voting on this tonight, but we'll have a second reading and vote on September 8th. Councilmember Wendell?
I would like to recommend that we strike Section 7A, the Social Gatherings Restricted Amendment to this ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion to restrict residential gatherings larger than 10 people. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
To amend it, to remove that restriction.
To remove it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Bacon, second that. All right, any others in the amendments that council would like to strike? Councilmember Brink?
I would move to strike all of them.
What? I'm sorry. Let me ask.
There was a second, I believe.
Second?
On the first, yeah.
Well, let me just ask city attorney here, who's.
Well, I think you're having an informal discussion at the present time to determine if there, what direction to go with these amendments.
Okay, thank you, but that's what we have our city attorney for.
Well, since there are competing amendments, then it might be appropriate to have first reading of the proposed ordinance and then make amendments one by one, starting with Nick's proposed amendment.
Sir? Sir? City attorney will handle this.
So, it'd be a motion to approve the ordinance, and then we'll, since there are competing amendments to the ordinance, we'll take it one by one.
Okay. Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve ordinance 20-019.
I'm moved.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? As amended with my original?
No, this would be prior to your amendment, and then we'll consider your amendment.
No, all right, let him talk. Well, that's what we have a city attorney for, so.
Is there a second?
So, just as a point of clarification, my motion is to basically open the floor for discussion, including discussion on amendments on this ordinance.
Is there a second to that motion?
Okay, there's no second to that motion, so.
I'll second it.
As a point of clarification, if we don't have a second to that motion, we can't hear amendments either, correct?
That's correct. There is a second.
Okay, Councilmember Wendell did second it, so. Now, we have the council, now, Eve, looking at you here.
Yep.
The council now.
And so, the first proposed amendment that we would consider would be Nick's amendment. You want to make that motion then to the current ordinance?
Okay, I will repeat my original amendment, which was to strike Section 7A, the Social Gatherings Restricted.
Okay, Councilmember Bacon, I think you seconded that, okay? All right. And Councilmember Brink?
Nope, nope. There'd be discussion on that amendment among the council.
Mayor Corbett, can I speak to my amendment? Mayor Corbett, can I speak to my amendment?
I'm sorry, Councilman Wendell.
Can I speak to my amendment?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that I thought it might be helpful. I'm not in support of the Social Gatherings Restricted section of this ordinance. I didn't want to strike them all at once because I know that there is a variety of perspectives and input on each amendment. I thought it might be helpful to walk through them, so I would vote to strike. The reason I made the motion to amend this ordinance to remove 7A, I think it's a logical place to start, and I made that a motion because I'm not supportive of that particular amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Bacon, did you have anything to? Did you have anything, because you seconded that? Did you have anything you wanted to comment? All right.
Can I make a comment to that? We're discussing?
Yes.
Okay. I feel that if we strike that social gatherings aspect of this and not change the alcoholic beverage sales hours, all you're doing, again, is going to be driving people into house parties and into smaller locations. They're not going to stop the behavior, I don't think. That's my opinion.
Do you have a comment?
Any other comments from the council on that proposed amendment?
This is Holly. I would be favorable to accepting that proposed amendment. I also would be favorable to the comment Leah just made, that if we are to accept that proposed amendment, that we also move, when appropriate, that we would then move to strike the piece regarding sales of alcohol.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilman Wendell?
I would accept councillor Brink's, what I assume could be a friendly amendment, to also strike Section 2CI from this ordinance.
That you're agreeable with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now, public discussion on that proposed amendment only at this time.
Okay. City clerk, could you repeat the amendments what's voted to strike?
A motion was made by Wendell to amend to strike 7A regarding social gatherings. A second was made by councilmember Bacon. Discussion was had. Tilton Byrd made a friendly amendment to remove 2CI regarding alcohol beverage sales. Wendell approved the friendly amendment to his motion.
And now we'll open public comment on, are there any other amendments to this ordinance?
Might be appropriate to take public comment on the proposed amendment only. So the comments from the public would be confined to whether or not it's appropriate to amend the proposed ordinance to strike the social gatherings restriction and the hours of alcoholic beverage sales.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on the council's comments?
Rick Weibel, resident of Brookings. This is going in the right direction. I think this is probably a good compromise to start out with, but just to disagree with the attorney a little bit, the discussion should only be on the two eliminations at this point because that's the motion on the floor.
That was my point. That was his point.
Okay, so I want to make sure that everybody's clear on, and the other ones are nonderme. A couple other points I want to make sure that I hold you accountable for. So since you said that there were other people that were wanting to potentially to be heard, I think that's really important, and I think it's incumbent upon you to potentially table this motion today to allow the other voices that you say are another 250 people that were refused. That would be considered an ADA discrimination at this point. I just want to make sure that you are clear. It is the council's responsibility to make sure that everyone in the public that wanted to be here was appropriately heard. So I think that's really important as leaders to potentially consider that you don't have to make a decision today, but having the full input of your citizenry to make sure that they're on board and understand the clarity of your actions, that's true leadership. So remember to honor that. And those of us that have had COVID, don't be afraid of us. And I respect your ability to wear a mask for your own protection, and there's many reasons that people should wear masks. And out of this COVID epidemic, I hope as Americans, that when we see future mask wearers, that we honor and respect them for whatever reason that they're potentially wearing a mask, because it is a norm in Asia. That's a good thing that we might be learning from all this. Another thing that I want to make sure that the public is aware, and I'm hoping Brookings took advantage of this, is that you actually have the ability to apply for federal dollars to help in this environment, to provide masks to the public who may not be able to afford it if you're going to go down the next levels. I think you need to be prepared for that. And I think as another thing, hey, let's be innovative. And I'm going to give you another idea here that you could use those federal dollars for-
Could you speak specific to this?
I am being specific, because this is the next step, and this is what it's about. So we're talking about making sure every voice is heard. I want to see you guys put on the table a drive-through election system so people can sit in their car and have their voices heard this November. Be proactive. Be ready. Stop being in fear. I want to know how much money was spent to make sure we expand the ability to hospitalizations.
Can we focus on, can we focus on? Can we focus on? You're in this council.
Pardon. Okay. And to your point, the people that aren't here, we do have a second reading on September 8th, so. Mr. Schmichael?
So the public comments have to be confined to the amendment this time.
Yep. Nick Schmichael, citizen. I am here to speak actually on the alcohol sale very specifically. I waited, and I would say one of the things that needs to happen for city council, maybe look at in the future, is HVAC, holy cow, AC, let's get it fixed in here. If this were to be enacted, I think it is very, very important for the city to think about the business. And I know you guys have talked about how bars are going to be infected. I believe that from 10 to 2 is probably a pretty big sales time. I'm not a bar owner, but I would imagine a big amount of their sales comes from that time. If this were to be enacted, I think the city should temporarily, I'm not saying totally, but temporarily, look at ceasing operations at the liquor store and allow those businesses to serve off-sale. Now, I don't know what that entails. I'm pretty sure with our operators agreement, I know there's probably state laws, but I know this is all being acted in order of public emergency as well. But I just think in order to maybe fray some of the businesses hurt if this is, maybe the city can take a brunt, a little bit of this. It's not going to hurt the city in terms of 3B. You're still going to collect your 10 and 11% override. Perhaps it's going to furlough or get rid of some city employees temporarily at the liquor store. Manager would still be employed, you're still getting that override. I just think that's important to think about, that maybe this is a little bit of a help if this does get enacted to do that.
Thanks, Nick.
My name's Alexander Alk. I'm a student at SDSU. I just wanted to come be brief and stay on topic real quick and speak to you guys about, you know, I understand you're trying to close down things, to be proactive. You're worried about students going out and partying and the large gatherings that are going to be happening, but personally, as a student and a student athlete and all the things that are taken away from us, one of the things that I'm very concerned that will be taken away from us is I host a Bible study in my house. We are always over 10 members. I do not want to see that taken away from us. I've seen fantastic things come about through that. It's been a very, very strong part of my experience on Brookings, and I don't want to be punished for doing the right things here on campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, council, any other comments you have? Councilman Wendell?
I do think I would be remiss to just, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
With that 10 people-
Hold it, you're giving your name, please.
I'm Ben Creviere. With that 10 people, I have 12 people, siblings in my family, and we come together at home all the time, and they are family. So, I mean, they have spouses, they have kids. We're sitting at, close to 11 grandchildren right now, and then four spouses. So we're sitting at like 24 people in our family. What do we do?
Families would be excluded from the restriction.
Family would be excluded. So what if we want to invite a friend over? We have 10 family members already. Can we have 10 friends over?
Probably not.
So?
You could have a social gathering of 10 or fewer if this was approved.
So we'd have to go to somebody and get this approved to hang out with our families? And maybe a single friend? I mean, because if we add one person to it, we're already over the family limit. So then we have to call every time we want to hang out with someone? That's a valid question.
Mr. Mayor, I maybe could-
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to get us into a situation where we're having a back and forth again, but the comment I was going to make, we've now amended this ordinance to remove the potential of this section. I will say that part of the reason, I think as councilors, we wanted to put these items onto this ordinance and have some public conversation around it is, we've gotten a lot of recommendations. We've seen what a lot of peer communities have done, as they've seen escalating cases like we have.
Yep.
I think you all have shared a lot with us tonight that we don't have the corner on the market on information or opinion in this community. What I have found is that when we put items on an agenda, when we consider amendments to our ordinances, it does invite a lot of public conversation and open dialogue, and we receive a lot of feedback. I think these amendments are good examples of that. I didn't want to just vote to remove the amendments and never really talk about why we considered them or why we're having this conversation. I think it was good to talk about the thresholds that could potentially reintroduce them, but I proposed removing them because I think we've heard now and we maybe understand the challenges of enforcement. The questions you're asking, restricting these social gatherings in residential homes, I think we've heard from our community may be a bridge too far right now. And the hours of alcoholic beverage sales in the community, I think, would be challenging to enforce and maybe have some unintended consequences that would ripple into our residential neighborhoods. So I didn't want us just to vote and walk away from ever addressing why these items were being discussed, and I hope that gives you some insight that the questions you're asking are the types of questions we've been fielding and I think have informed some of our decisions.
Any other comments, council? Okay, second reading on this will be September 8th.
We have to vote on this amendment.
Thank you, Steve, or whoever, Bonnie, Steve, whoever. All right, any comments on? Seeing none. Bonnie, please call a roll.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrd?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
We're voting on the amendment? Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Procedurally, then, Leah, you have the opportunity to make any further motions to amend if you choose to at this time.
I'm okay.
Or any other council member.
I would move that we require masks, actually, both of them. I would move to remove both of those.
Okay, I was just going to ask for a second. Okay, Councilman Collins, you brought that up. Anything you want to speak to on that?
Yeah, I just, you know, I don't know how we could even enforce that. I mean, somebody's in a public place or something and they're not wearing a mask. I mean, are we asking our police to go up and ask if they have some reason why they're not wearing a mask or something like that? I just don't think we can enforce those.
Can I make a comment to that?
Yes.
I agree that we should be wearing the masks, but I think that the way that this comes across is so divisive and possibly violation of HIPAA and other situations, and it just causes people to tattle on other people and causes ill will. And I believe that that is a problem that's perhaps greater than actually just not mandating it. So I would just hope you would wear them, but I don't want to make you wear them.
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to say that, yeah, I mean, I think it's your responsibility if you want to wear a mask or not. You know, if you want to wear it, fine, that's okay. If you don't want to wear it, then don't. I mean, that's my opinion.
I'm not quite ready to give up on those two points. I think we need a week to think about this. I want to see what happens for a week. I'm not saying it's going to pass next week, but I want to see what happens for the next week. Not going to hurt any of us to wear a mask regardless, but I want to, I'm going to hold on this one.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so we have to vote, just a minute, we got to vote on the additional amendment.
I need to warn you, under Robert's rules of order, that motion is illegal. You cannot take an original document and basically strike out the last remaining text of it. That's against Robert's rules of order. Basic principle.
Thank you.
Okay, city attorney, where do we go from here?
Yep, so you could ask for additional public comment on the mask, although I would say that, you know, you did permit comments on mask requirements throughout the entire public hearing on the first ordinance. So I would think that there has been ample public comment on mask wearing.
Okay, we'll open if anybody else cares to speak to that. It hasn't been of chance.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Delaney. I'm a resident here of Brookings. I just wanted to mention that I agree. I think masks are important. I think we have the right to wear them or the right not to wear them, and I believe I have the right not to be bullied when I do wear my mask. Been hearing a lot of sheep noises in the chambers today directed at our city council, and I don't think that's fair. I think they have the right to wear them if they like. They are six feet apart, maybe they don't need to, but it is their right, and I think that this should be a continuation of our right to make those decisions for ourselves and for our families. I believe it would be an overstep of our government if we were required to wear them. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, so this is a public hearing. Councilman Bacon?
Could we just have a clarification on what we are voting on?
This would be an amendment to strike the last two remaining provisions of the proposed ordinance.
Legally, that's not allowed. Okay, we'll let our, would you let our city attorney do his job?
I'm trying to figure this out.
Yeah, well.
Any, do you follow me there? So we're striking the remaining two provisions if it's approved by the council.
So my point then, while we still haven't voted on that part, but if the council chooses to strike the last two, we really don't have an ordinance then.
That'd be correct.
Okay, council? Ready to vote? Councilman Tilton Byrd, you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. Please call the roll on the last two.
Correct. Strike the last two proposed amendments. Tilton Byrd?
No.
Wendell?
No.
Bacon?
No.
Brink?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Corbett?
No.
Niemeyer?
No.
Okay, so. Now, Steve?
That would conclude the first reading, and the second reading would then be scheduled for next week.
Okay, we don't move forward. Thank you. We got to get Nick Schmichael in here and see if he can get that HVAC working he was talking about. All right, next. Turn order to the city manager for resolution 20-72.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. The resolution presented tonight mirrors ordinance 2019. The resolution will need to be adjusted to reflect those changes that you just discussed. Once approved, the resolution will go into effect Thursday.
Okay. All right, let's just take a minute while people are leaving. I know everybody wants to chat and visit, so. Okay, motion is action on resolution 20-72, entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll move.
Oh.
Once again, you'll have to adjust the resolution as presented so it mirrors the ordinance unless you would like the resolution to impact residential dwellings and alcohol sales after 10.
As a point of clarification, can I make the motion to approve the resolution with the language that was stricken from the ordinance also stricken from this resolution?
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Wendell, second. We're looking, city attorney, we're okay on that? We're looking, city attorney, we're okay on that?
This is, yeah, this would be a motion to approve the resolution as revised.
Council comments? You have a motion to approve?
No. I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, public comment on resolution 20-72 is?
Carrie Papka, so I'm just wondering, so what, what's going on here? We're like all in, wondering what the hell? Because are we voting on our mask mandated now? Is that what we're voting on? Because what about those of us who our doctor has said it's unhealthy for us? Do we have to wear a scarlet letter on our sleeve so we don't get bullied?
So...
So shouldn't our health be between us and our doctor, not the city council?
Um, and Steve can confirm this, but within the ordinance, as it's written, if you have a, a health reason why you shouldn't wear a mask, then you don't have to. I believe, Steve, can you correct me in the language?
But, going back to the bullying part, like what she had said, what, what are we supposed, those of us who have a medical reason or can't wear one? So now there's a mask mandate, and then we're going to have people coming after us, you need to wear a mask!
City, city attorney's got a, got an answer on that?
There's an exclusion for, uh, persons with a medical condition, a mental health condition, or disability.
And I understand that, but, so do we wear our medical thing on our shirt then, so we don't get bullied?
Well, I can't control what the public would do.
I mean, if you guys mandate that, there's going to be even more bullying. We have just as much of a right to not wear them as what they have a right to wear them. I mean, shouldn't I listen to my doctor? I mean...
There are medical exemptions written directly into the ordinance.
What's that?
There are medical exemptions written directly into the ordinance for that reason.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, if you make this a mask mandate, and I go out in public or something, and somebody comes up to me and says, "If you're going to be by me, you better have a mask," um, do I whip out a thing and say, "I got a letter right here"?
And it's a citywide mandate.
That's not fair.
It's a citywide mandate, so I guess you'll have to navigate whether or not you abide by it or not.
So, so when, when did it become that we, I have to listen to the city council because I don't want to get bullied? Shouldn't I be listening to my doctor on my own health?
Okay, any other public comment?
What's the fine for non-compliance? Just so that they understand.
Maximum fine for a vi, any violation of city ordinance would be $200, that's the maximum.
So, is that automatic by the officer that spots us, and then we have to go to court to prove the HIPAA?
Uh, the, you can present any defenses if you're cited, but you asked the question as to what the maximum fine is, and I'm trying to be responsive to you.
You are, I mean, you're being awesome. And so, do, can the officer make that decision right there, or do we appeal to the city? I'm just trying to understand the process.
It, it would be a, treated as a city ordinance violation.
Bradley Walker, I'm a little, President of Brookings, I'm a little confused. Isn't this exactly the same thing that you voted to remove the first, you're voting on this one to restore the ordinance that you just voted to remove the first two amendments to the ordinance of 20, 20019? How can you vote on this to restore those amendments that you just removed?
Go ahead.
I, I think you have the complete opposite. What the resolution had was those four amendments. I believe what the council, um, is, is, the motion on the floor is, is to do, to approve the resolution as amended, which strikes those first two items that were stricken from the ordinance. So it mirrors the, the ordinance that was just passed.
What is the specific text of this resolution?
Uh, it's all online within the packet, sir.
I don't do any good right now.
Um, and i, if you go back to the, I can't tell you word for word, um, but the first item was regarding residential dwellings, the second item was regarding sales of alcohol after, uh, 10:00 PM Thursday, Friday, Saturday, those two items will be restricted, will be struck if the council approves it. Um, the last two items are regarding the mask, one regarding the permit, and then the second one regarding the mask in any business or public indoor spaces.
Yes, but what I'm saying is that those two, the first two items, sale of alcohol and, and gatherings are included in this resolution.
But the, the motion to, excuse me, the motion to approve it, remove those two provisions, the motion to approve the resolution.
So the only two remaining, then this resolution has to be changed or edited?
That's correct, and that's been done.
Okay. Then about the, uh, enforcement of the mask mandate, is it similar to a traffic ticket type thing, like, uh, somebody comes up and says, "You're not six feet away from me", or the, is, is the same thing as, it's like if, if I get a ticket from a police officer saying, "I ran a stop".
Correct.
And I say, "I did". Do I get to go in, in court and plead not guilty and have a trial?
Absolutely.
And then whoever cites the need for that has to prove?
That's correct.
That I was not social distancing at, at that time?
It would have to be proved by the city, yes.
Okay, so if somebody calls, like you said, if I'm walking through, wherever I'm walking, and somebody walks up to me in my, within my social distance area, six feet intrudes on my area, and then somebody says, "Oh, this person isn't social distancing", and he tells a police officer, and the police officer doesn't have probable cause, but just because somebody says that I'm not social distancing, that does not give them the right to, to issue me a citation.
You probably wouldn't be cited in that situation.
Okay, well, that's what I mean, so that's why I'm saying, how is this, it's not enforceable? And, and another rea, question I had was, you must wear a mask where social distancing, I can't remember the exact words, is not achievable. Okay, well, where is social distancing not achievable? I mean, granted, this is, if, if the, if this ordinance was enacted right now, this would not be allowed. As, as you have set up the other, all the other previous meetings, and here was a limited number of chairs, so I can't see a condition in this town where social distancing would not be achievable. I mean, we have arrows on the, on the aisles at, at the stores, we have little spots that we have to stand on, six feet, stay, wait your turn, how is that not achievable, social distancing? That's why I'm saying, this, this whole masking is, is unenforceable.
Okay, any other public comment?
I would just like to point out that, so if somebody's not wearing a mask, and an officer comes up and wants to cite you, and you tell them, "I have a medical condition", then what? Is the officer going to ask for a note from our doctor?
No. No, you got to trust the officers, they use good judgment.
Well, I just want to know, like...
Yeah.
Where that line is going to be drawn, I mean, so, so if I say, or if anybody says, "I have a medical condition", that's that.
Yeah, it depends on the officer, but I can't envision any of them, you know, saying, "Don't produce the document" or something, I mean, they're going to listen to you.
Okay.
Okay, all right, sir?
Hello, I'm Mayor Corbett, and council, uh, my name is Matthew Urm, I'm a pastor here in town at a church. Uh, we're doing four different services a weekend now to accommodate the comfortability of all of our members, and God's blessed us with about 90% of our typical attendance back in here, uh, back in worship. My question for the council is, is our church, which conducts public worship services on a weekly basis, multiple, multiple of them, um, are we included in, uh, in this resolution, the fourth, fourth point, where we would require all people who are not six feet apart to wear face coverings in our worship space?
You want that one?
Can I turn that over to the city attorney?
It generally would, would, would pertain to all indoor public spaces, uh, if, if...
Yep, so, so my question not, wasn't general, is specific, so does that apply to churches as well?
Probably yes.
Okay. I, I think the council needs to consider this.
Can I respond?
Please.
Councilman Niemeyer?
Um, I attend the Methodist Church, and there's about 30 to 40 of us that, at our services, we all wear a mask. It's part of our service, it's hard, it's, it's, it, it, and that's our choice, I get that. But if you had a visitor, they may not come in if you're not wearing a mask. I, I, it's up to you guys. I, I, like I said, I'm willing to take another week to look at this. I don't think this is going to pass tonight.
Yeah.
But we've already got one that's on the books for a second reading next week, for the same thing that we're talking about now, okay?
And I would commend the council to take a, a more thorough look at this, we can answer specific questions that we have, so thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right.
Tim Jensen again. You guys put this amendment out there for a second reading next Tuesday, but this puts it into effect immediately.
Right.
I think you need to table this till next Tuesday. I don't think you need to do this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Craig Eisbrand. I just want to talk about mandating masks, and I'm just trying to play this in my head. My son and I are playing catch in the backyard, and he throws a bad one, and it skips across the street. So now I've got to put a mask on to run across the street to get the ball. Or, I want to go for a bike ride. I mean, look, guys, I understand the masks in certain situations, but this is such an overreach. I see, you know, you take your kids for a bike ride, and you're, there's nobody around, and we're going to have masks on? It's just too much.
This pertains to indoor spaces.
Just to the indoor space.
Yes. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Kevin Grunwald, um, I just have one question. For all the resolutions and amendments, who is responsible for writing all these? Like, the individuals, who is addressing this? I mean, is, are we doing this as a group? Are we doing this individually? Where is the reference to these resolutions directly coming from? Are we getting outside sources for these rules in other states? What is the reference? Just so everybody knows what's going on. I mean, why are these coming up, and what's driving a, a lot of these that some, you know, disagree with, and some don't? But at least we'll know, you know, who do we hold accountable to making up some of this stuff?
Okay.
Thank you.
That would be me as the city manager. Um, many months ago, when this started occurring, I reached out to university, other university towns, peers across South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, to understand what other towns are doing, uh, so that if we ever have to implement some type of legislation, we already have it in place, or at least some language that we could look to, but then refer back to see and understand how it impacted those communities. So, that language came from me, sir.
All right, Mr. Harms. I see you're fighting to get up here.
Hello, I'm, uh, Jason Harms, uh, of Brookings. Uh, together with my family, we run a handful of retail stores, and, and I'm also a board member on the South Dakota Retailers Association, uh, 60 members of which are in town. So, uh, speaking on behalf of, uh, both of those groups, first, I want to say thank you for volunteering for this. It's a thankless job, and you probably haven't heard many this week, and it's a long night, so thanks, and, and I think our common ground, everybody in the room, uh, hopes everybody has good health, and, and that is the common ground. Maybe we don't agree how we get there, how we prevent sickness, uh, et cetera, but, uh, I'll limit my comments, uh, they're limited as most of the amendment has been gutted, but, uh, maybe a couple of thoughts as you go to vote next week. Uh, this amendment, I think, as written, uh, will put this in place for 60 days. I think you have the opportunity to continue to look at numbers, hospitalizations, and all the other statistics you look at, and maybe we take this 30 days at a time, or 14 days at a time, or, I appreciate you don't want to have this meeting as often as you meet, uh, but 60 days is a long time, uh, for a lot of people. Um, and I guess another comment related to the language, uh, the second paragraph about face masks, as written, uh, it was unclear as to whether anybody could truly be in a restaurant and, uh, have a drink, or have a bite to eat, anything like that. So, uh, if that was cleared up or answered in, in the week between now and then, that would be appreciated. And probably one more thought relating to the first motion or this, um, you know, we're talking about, uh, limiting things, and you can't, uh, have a drink at a bar after 10, or you can't be in, uh, public places with more than 10. Uh, I hope we can probably work together to come up with some alternatives. As we're limiting the places people can be, the people aren't going to disappear. And fall is a wonderful time in our state, in our town, and, uh, you know, what can we be doing? If we say masks are good, we've also said distance is good, and space is good, and we've got big open areas, and football fields, and, uh, and, and maybe we can find some alternatives for people to do other things than, uh, hope they don't go to a basement, and some things like that, but, uh, thanks again.
Thank you. All right, close the public comment. Council comments or questions? Did you have something you want to say? No. You guys stand up closer, see, so that you can get the front right away.
Sorry. My name's Daniel Moriarty, and the one question I had was, let's say they can ticket you for not having a mask, if me and a buddy are driving down the street in a car, can the police pull you over for not having a mask on while in a vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not inside a vehicle.
Okay, thanks.
Good question.
So was that a yes or a no?
Okay. All right, now we'll close the public comment. Council comments or questions? Councilmember Tilton Byrne, question?
Nothing for me at this time.
Okay, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Frank.
I was just going to say, I, look, maybe we have to go to this point, I just don't think we're ready tonight, I don't think we've answered these questions, I don't think that people understand how this would work, I don't think that, um, we have a well-thought-out enforcement strategy, and I think, like I said earlier, it's going to just lead to division, so I just want everyone here to know that.
Just going to vote it down.
Or vote it down, yeah.
Or vote it down.
Yep. Okay, everybody ready then to see what they're doing here? Okay, please call the roll.
Wendell?
No.
Bacon?
No.
Frank?
No.
Collins?
No.
Corbett?
No.
Niemeyer?
No.
Tilton Byrne?
No.
Okay, resolution defeated. Next item, council? Okay, any items for future discussion, council?
Move to adjourn.
What, Leah? No, Nick went out to get it for us. All right, this time, council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. So, can all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
House left.